Good. We're unmuted.
You already have, right?
Yeah. Good evening, this is a in-person special meeting of the Board of Education. It's Monday, March 31st, and it is 6:32. We're at Harding High School, the library. Today, we're, the first item on the agenda is the second full board, can you lift it? The second full board training session, facility by cave. In this training, we're going to be talking about board self-assessment and the policy and bylaws. And we'll start with the word self-assessment. We have with us, I have to do our events. I'm Jennifer Perez, Board Chair, we have Andre Woodson, Willie Medina, Albert Bennington, Joseph Palavich, Maritza Estramera Jimenez, Robert Traver, and online, we have Christine Batjes Perez and Keisha Cassemer. We have a full Forum Board. All righty. The Board Self-Assessment does qualify for executive session. If we go on executive session, it'd be the Board members plus our trainers, Nick Caruso and Joey. Joey?
Over.
Over. So if we're going to the record, make that motion.
Sure.
Yes.
We had a lengthy conversation about this with the office and given the complexity of the situation, the fact that this thing is sort of, sort of required this, we think it might be in the better interest to do this in public. Not to mention the fact that if there is a complaint about it, whether you're, you would win or not is up for grabs.
Yeah.
And, but the complaint, it's on the front page of the newspaper. And it's, I, it's our recommendation that if people are willing, that we do this in public.
Dr. Avery has also joined us in person. So saying no motion, but we'll go ahead and do this in public for the Board Self-Assessment.
Okay, so good evening.
Good evening.
Have people had, because I asked if these get put out last week, did people have a chance to look through these and look at the results? Because rather than have to go step by step through it, I guess the question I want to start with is, did anything stand out? I mean, I have some, in fact, Dodi and I both spent time talking about this as well. We have some observations, but we don't really want to share them with you because we want this to be your evaluation. We will pick things up later should we need to bring them up. But I guess I wanted to start with the conversation. Now, let me step back for a second. Our expectation for this evening, Dr. Avery, I'm glad you're here tonight. I know you have another important thing to do. But I think it is important that you're here at the table as well. The two expectations for tonight are, one, to discuss this assessment. And this is a benchmark, this is a starting place. The state, as I read their instructions, were that this will be done periodically to reassess is there improvement. And, you know, going back to the elephant in the room from the last time, they're looking for improvement. It's not about being here, being present, it's also about seeing changes. Now, in the evaluation, as I read it, a lot of you said you're starting to see changes already, and that's correct. But I think we need to work through that. They would like to see some performance goals based on this evaluation, this assessment. I'm using assessment instead of evaluation because I think it's a, it's a little bit different kind of measurement than the evaluation tool that we use. So my hope is that as we discuss this, certainly want to identify areas of strengths, but I think, or improvement. But I think also, are there areas that need to be addressed that we can sort of turn into a performance goal? And our goal tonight, I think you've seen that word twice in a different meaning in the sentence, but our goal tonight is not to solve the problems, but to identify some and develop an action plan toward working through. So if we, you decide this is one particular area we want to focus on, we might talk about what the process for working on that would be, but we're not going to try and solve it tonight. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
And that's going to be about the first hour. If we're into a really good conversation, it might go a little bit longer, but we want to give Dr. Bollard plenty of opportunity to talk about policy and bylaws tonight because that's the other part. I know he's spent a lot of work over the last couple of weeks, really digging into policy and looking at your bylaws. And one, just trying to track down which are the correct copies of each because they're, they were pretty much all over the place. And I know that's been very confusing to people along the way. So he's going to, he did conversation about all that and he's going to really help move us all forward. So with that, and there's one other thing I want to maybe start because we came up with another elephant in the room and we want to address it right up front. Because over the next three or four sessions, I mean, we're, we're planning on being a team through this whole thing. We also have Leonard Lockhart, our Association President, wants to be involved. He's getting ready to go to Atlanta this week to the National Superboards Conference, where they're going to name him president-elect, which is really kind of neat. But he wants to be involved as well. But one of the things we kind of had this conversation, and if we're acknowledging it, I can't imagine as a board how you feel about it, that if you look at all the technical assistance people, you look at the state people that are involved, there's a lot of people that look like us. And, you know, we have to acknowledge that. We have Dave Irwin, who is a master superintendent, who is this superintendent representative, I guess for lack of a better term, on the technical assistance team, is going to join us next week to talk about the Board Superintendent Relations. Ed Arum, who is on the technical assistance team, is a budget guru. I mean, he really knows his numbers. And Dr. Avery, you probably have started to work with him, he really knows his stuff. But in, as we were talking, old white guys. And we are sensitive to that. We want you to have the people that can most impact what's happening in the district and can help me move forward. So I guess we're kind of looking for some validation that you're willing to have them be part of it. I mean, they're scheduled, but we can change that if you don't think it's going to be, their participation is valuable. But we didn't want to just do it and have some, you know, hey, what's going on here? We wanted to be right up front with it. We also have, because our sixth session, as it's currently scheduled, and we are, we're being flexible. We're moving this around to make it work best for you. We have a guy who is actually working with Cave as a consultant now, Chris Ferran, who does media consulting for school districts and school associations. He was in charge of public relations for the Boston Public Schools. So he really does know communications. And again, if there's a sense of, we want to hear what he has to say, we can bring him in to that last session. So I'm laying this out, hoping for some feedback. And just maybe a little boost in the right direction so that we know we're on the right track or we're not. So as we start, could I just maybe get a little bit of feedback on that to start with?
I'm okay personally with everyone and anyone you bring for the fact that I trust the people that you're bringing up and you're giving us their names and what they're doing. And I don't have a problem with it's a male, female, white, African American, Chinese, green, purple, white, it doesn't bother me. I would like to learn more and to be elevated and to acknowledge what we're supposed to do. So I don't have a problem. I, I welcome it because I know who you guys are and, you know, the standards that you guys have to work with people.
We're also grateful for your confidence in us because we worked really hard to do that.
To be clear, I don't want them here at all. But since they're here, they should own part of what we have to do. I did, I did have a chance to meet with the finance guy.
You did, you said?
Yes. And the whole, the whole team are going through the ranks. And it's not so much a race thing as a lived experience thing. They have not lived the experience of an inner-city school district. While sitting down with the finance guy, I know there's a respect to you if you're watching. He spoke of his issues getting bonding to repair fields and stuff like that. Those are not Bridgeport problems. We're deciding whether we can put food on the table. We're deciding to get rid of paraprofessionals, which probably only maybe three or four districts in the entire state have looked at. We're on sustenance level. So if they're going to be involved, they need to sit in the finance community. They need to actually come, go in our schools and see if they're facing, at least get a taste of the experiences we're living in, if they are still doing. And wrap up with what I began with, I think this will be here in person.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, I, I think I'm not quite where Joe is. But my concern when I read the bios for the technical assistance team was the lack of urban experience. And I think it was, I thought I read one was, had some experience in Danberg. But, which is, you know, a small urban community. And that I, I accord as having experience, it would be comparable to ours. But otherwise, it was the lack of urban experience. And I think that's important to understand what we are going through and what we go through and the difficulty that we experience that other, other cities like us have been through. Because that's really what we, we experience and reflect in the overall his, history in, in all of the regions is the lack of funding. And that's what, you know, Senate Bill 1511 this year is trying to address is a redo on the ECS formula. And that's going to make a world of difference in our ability to respond to the needs of the, and to me, that's the underlying problem in our district. It allows us to address so, so many of the shortcomings that we have. And so I, I just think that that's a, a problem. And so the ability to, I, I, well, Willie and I sit on the CES board here and talk with people who, you know, have problems and they're legitimate problems, but they're not anywhere near the same problems that we have to deal with.
The economy of sale, no matter how you know.
Yeah, that is correct.
I will say, according to the state expectation, again, we're kind of living off, all of us are living with their expectations is to develop policies and procedures for overseeing finances. And I think, in this case, I think that would be very effective at that.
I haven't, I'm like Joe, I haven't, I was introduced to the three gentlemen as I was going in to meet Dr. Avery about something and they all were delightful human beings to meet and say hello to. And, you know, I'm not casting aspersions on any of them. I'm just saying, sharing that my concern was, do they, do they understand what we have to live with and what we've been through? And my, mine goes back to the early 90s. But I saw it in the 80s too, working in different ways through, in districts throughout the state. So.
No, no. Anybody else? Anybody on screen want to jump in? Okay, all right. So duly noted. I'm not sure how much we can change the plans per se, but certainly I'm going to share with both of them your concerns. And if they aren't coming out right from the start, making themselves relevant to your needs, then, then shake my hand. I think that will, I think that's the best way to approach it. Here's, the, the challenge to you is to make sure that you can maintain credibility through this process to help overcome some of your concerns. I mean, you can't necessarily take away the historical part, but at least I have to, they have the skill set to help you move forward.
Well, the other thing that I, that I do agree with is that, while I think that it is very helpful for us to go through this self-evaluation, self-respection that we're going through through this experience, it couldn't come at a worse time. Because we're dealing with a 25 million, plus or minus a few million, because once a few million deficit that we have to figure out how to overcome. And that means lobbying in Hartford for this bill that we hope gets through the legislature that would fix the problem. So there's a lobbying need, there's a budgetary component, and there's, you know, there's the, the need for us to, to go through all of this. And oh, by the way, the State Department of Ed is going to be looking over your shoulder and breathing down your neck. Oh, while you're trying to fix all these other problems. And so all of this is just, puts the pressure cooker on us, you know? You perform, perform, perform under this huge. So I just think that it's, it's good. It's good that we, we, we do need to, to figure out how to, but I don't think we're unique. At the same time, the state's been in Hartford for a year. And are they doing the same thing in Hartford? I don't know. But I don't think so. And they have the same problem, which is a big deficit and looking at layoffs of hundreds and, you know. So Bridgeport somehow has been put on the, in the spotlight. And I'm not quite sure why. And so I, I just, and it's nothing directed either of you will know.
I think we all share the frustration.
Working with you all, but it's like, do we need, we need to, to do all of these things at the same time? This meeting that Dr. Avery was at, we've got a facilities master plan that we came, got out of this. And it's a great thing, it hasn't been done in 15, 20 years. We're trying to explain it to the public. And the part that, you know, to hear is the public explaining what their reactions are. And oh, nope, we got to come to this meeting now and not hear what the public says. And it's just, how do we do all this and juggle all these things?
Duly noted. I want to try to keep this on track. If we want to get stuff done tonight so that we can, that end of it. You ask. Had the elephant make sure happy.
But again, we opened the door to, just again, keeping, keeping it on track. Having been a superintendent, context is important. Technical skills and, and the things that the state cave can provide for support is, is important. But it's in a, the context of what Bridgeport is experiencing here. We have to kind of keep that elephant on the table to make sure that we address it to our work. And to be here.
Mark wanted to do something, I want to make sure I get play, one, operate. So in the assessment, as you were looking through this, and it's a very different one than the type we usually do. This is really more about interactions and how you function as a team versus, do we have a policy manual that we do? You know, that typical self-evaluation is more about what do we do and what don't we do as a board? This is really to get a better sense of your interactions and how you, how you see yourselves as a high-performing, medium-performing board or whatever, in a variety of areas. And before we, I'm going to try to hit up each of the 11 assessments quickly. I do have many overall reactions, any comments as to what you saw that either was surprising or, yeah, kind of, it's us. And I'd also refer you, I hope you read the comments, some of them were very enlightening. But that's part of, that's part of the rest, that's part of the life, you think of each other in some ways, or yourselves. And I, as I saw it, I saw two or three areas, three or four areas that you might want to think about some kind of performance goal. But as I say, I want this to come from you. If you need suggestions, we're here. But I really want to leave this open to the floor now. Any observations?
Yeah, we still don't have, as a board, goals and objectives by which to measure the superintendent. We're supposed to be having a mid-peak evaluation as well. We're also, again, falling behind. We have trouble as a board and I guess as an administration as well, keeping to timelines. Things are delayed to the point where it gets dropped in our laps. We got to make a decision before X, Y, and Z, well, this is lost. These are those, these are things we need to work to tightening up us as a board, as managers of the superintendent. We need to make sure these timelines are met and that we've got plenty of time to vet the information that's put before us. As far as budgets and everything as well, as well. We can't operate as a board without information. And we as a board need to communicate that that is unacceptable with us. We can't just approve blanket 20, 20 million cuts, 2 million cuts. We're not seeing what we're intending to cut. We need to have a menu to address the budget.
People, y'all have anything?
I was like, the comment, I also agree that there was a comment, a comment, you know, golden objectives, we have, not a shared, like a vision yet for, for ourselves. And a lot of our, a lot of our decision-making is reactive. That was another comment that stuck out to me. You know?
Yep. And maybe jumping ahead slightly, section five of the training is going to be about vision and goals. And I see that as a working session to help establish some of that. The big question I think we'll want to have, maybe the, Um, the the big question I think we'll want to have maybe this this evening or maybe down the road is what did those goals look like short term versus long term? Because you have some opportunities, if you just think of yourself setting up for a strategic planning process. Um, that would require you to have your permanent superintendent in place, I think, if you'd want their their input on that. That's a longer term process. Um, but it might be your goal tonight to say, that's going to be one of our objectives down the road. Or we're gonna establish on that evening four or five goals for the next year or two. You know, not maybe as broad as every child will come out of here with this or that, but to say for this next year, we're going to, that's where you might have to go look, setting up a strategic plan. Ensuring that the administration has the appropriate resources to lead this school district, that the teachers have as much in the classroom as they can. I don't want to lead this conversation though, so you try and keep quiet and just put, say that there is going to be a session on goals.
Yeah, I just gotta make this point, we can't assure that the appropriate resources make it to the lesson unless they give us the appropriate resources to distribute. What we could do is make sure we distribute the scarce resources that the state gives us in the best manner possible. I just wanted to.
Well, that, yeah, and I'm, again, in the interest of the evening and time, do we all agree that there's a problem with resources and advocacy is critical to doing your part as as best as possible to pull that in? So, when we, that may be one of your issues, I just don't want to beat that horse all night because there are other things to talk about.
Right, yeah.
And that's the first thing that came up.
Right, I apologize, but there's a false narrative being put out there that we're mismanaging the money. Every time it comes up that we've got to allocate resources properly, it's gonna come up that we've got to allocate scarce resources that we have. Because that that narrative should not be allowed to breathe any shape or form or anything.
Oh, and and I think we, it's easy for us to say, we agree. I won't speak for Joe, not or not. We we don't disagree with that, one bit. Um, it's why it can exist in many ways, it's to help advocacy, your issues are even more desperate. Um, as are Hartford and New Haven, et cetera, but um you can only put so much into a formula before the formula breaks if it isn't enough money, and that's been happening for a very long time. So, outside of that. Um, I mean, I I saw several observations um in here that hit a flag, rang a bell, whatever. Um, what are some of the other things that you need to talk about? And I hope this is a safe place tonight, we can talk about what we need to talk about, there'll be that's gonna be my job to jump in front of the bullet, somebody starts shooting. Um, but I I, we can't fix something or we can't even comment that it needs to be done if we don't have this chance to talk. Okay.
So, I think all this talk of all getting money, advocating, I think, I think that we have our priorities backwards. I think they're probably gonna be asking the state, and I hear we, I hear us asking the state for money all the time. And sometimes I hear people threatening the state, you know, at times. So, you know, that's not good, you can't be asking somebody for money and then threatening them at the same time. We have a a councilwoman who likes to threaten the state and at the same time ask the state for money. You can't be both, you can't be both people, you can't be a tough guy and then at the same time they go do things, you know, take the normal process. You gotta, you gotta, you gotta, like I said, you gotta be humble, you gotta go talk to the people nicely. You may not like them, but you gotta, you know, you you need them, they don't need you. So why are you gonna be mean to those people? So, like I said, you know, they, and I, and I think before you advocate, you have to get your house in order. You cannot advocate for more money when you're spending money out like crazy and you're not trying to get things in order, you're just asking for money. At least try to get your house in order before you, before you advocate for money. Why, why would they give you, that's like, that's like your, your, I hate to use it, but like, your kid, your kid goes and you give them money for a haircut and they lose the money for a haircut and then they say that, I need a haircut. I just gave you money for a haircut. So I'm supposed to give you money every time you lose your money, you know, this, that, we have to get our house in order before we go ask people for money. And we gotta stop being mean and 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 threatening them, threatens lawsuits and all this stuff and then asking them for money the next minute. That's just my, my personal. It's interesting when we speak about people and things because that's the same thing we were trying to do back in the beginning of last year. Just trying to figure out to balance a budget, to get a budget before, but we weren't allowed to speak about the budget. But then spending was being done without even having a budget before us. You know, without having a budget before, we were spending money and the same people that have their hands up to speak about the money or to, you know, have the house in order, we're running the house under the ground and voting to have the house under the ground. Which is a matter of record, it's all in the meeting's minute. So I just can't stand in a room and say we're gonna be, you know, honest with each other when we're not being honest with each other. You know, my voice was silenced multiple times. Couldn't ask questions, we couldn't be advocate, we couldn't do any advocate even because we weren't allowed to ask a question. Something was on on the table, then it was just moved into a immediate vote without discussion, having everybody respectful. That's why if you look at my evaluation, I don't know if you guys did personally, I did, I I did something that was done that, you know, we have two boards here that's been functioning before December and one else was, it's been working functioning after December. So we had maybe two months only to work as a board, we've been new board, meaning with a new chair, new superintendent, new vice chair, new secretary and everything, when we had about two months to start working and then we had to evaluate the board, that's why the number one question that came about that meeting that I recall was, are we doing there, you know, using this to assess the last year's board functioning or this year's board? And that was a tough question and it was answered, but it was tough to just think about that. Okay, that's not the reality that we've been, we've been living. We were living twelve months of chaos and then maybe two months of now we're working, but we were undoing, maybe not what we were doing last year.
So, so to your point though, because it is going forward, it is existing today and tomorrow, not yesterday. So what is, so the observation might be, what are we doing right now? And forget about what happened three months ago, six months ago, a year ago. What do you need to do now and continue to do that gets you where you need to go? And again, I'm paraphrasing just what I have interpreted from what I've heard through articles and through some conversations with folks at the state. The difference between Bridgeport and Hartford, I think, is that the state, through their observations of past, has a sense that we don't yet have the confidence in this governance board to fix the situation the way it needs to be fixed. And this is why we're going through this, that's why we're going through this training. So, one, hopefully if there's a missing skill or missing bylaw or missing procedures or whatever, that you'll have an opportunity to work on that, that's why we have Ed and Aaron coming in to talk about money. It's not, you're spending it wrong, it's, I've evaluated the books, here's some processes and procedures that are best practices. Take what you will and et cetera, so the states, back to our friend Jumbo here. Their expectation is we want to have confidence in this board that it will lead and not be part of the problem.
You said the date, you said the date.
Joey's gone.
You're just speaking as a superintendent. You can't be, you can't be an effective chief executive officer for a district if you don't know what your budgets. So, so I can't imagine going into a school district and being, and being hired by a board and not having a budget that I could administer over, that I could allocate resources to. You absolutely need that, so part of the work that we're doing with the tech, technical support and our work, you're looking at your bylaws, you're looking at your processes for getting a budget established, your timeline. Every district has a particular period where their budget has to be passed, right? So you go, you work your way backwards and then determine, when does the superintendent do his drop and run with the budget? When does he present to the full board? When does the finance committee get that budget to then do its due diligence to look at the various object codes? Go through it and determine what what it recommends in terms of allocations. And 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 asking the superintendent to make recommendations back to the board as to areas to cut, if you have to cut a couple million dollars. All of that needs to be done as part of the buildup to the to the superintendent's budget becoming the board's budget and then getting approved by the city and then having a spending plan that the superintendent can then administer. But to have nothing, I agree with you. How do you run a district effectively without that?
Is anybody who hasn't spoken, then we could go around to those who spoke, but just to get raise voices.
Okay, now back to the processes and policies, especially surrounding the budget, there was, there's already a timeline established. There's established years of precedence. Timeline was not followed last year. And we fell behind this year due to repairing the damage done by the prior finance committee, prior leadership. We had to make, no, well, again, again, what they're saying, we need to put processes in place and a timeline in place when it does exist. I could forward it to you later and I'll pull, I'll post it on our Facebook page later so people could see that there is actually a process and a timeline that was not followed, so if I sit here and say this.
Well, I have to cut you off a little bit because that's coming up in two sessions where we're gonna focus on finance and that's the time to say, this is the way we used to do, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, I don't want to tie this up in detail.
I apologize, but every time I hear of this statement, I'm going down to collect it for the record because we're.
I also think, and then we'll go to Ms. Fatsy Perez and then, you got it, yeah?
I'm.
You? Um, so, again, this is based, this assessment's based on current, you know, we we've had issues in the past. We have to move forward, that's the point, that's what they're looking for. And so we have to take what we're, what we're doing right now and go forward with that. So, we could harp on the past and and keep spending all our training time on that, but what are we doing?
And at the end of the evening, we won't have four performance goals to give to the state when they ask for it and then they're gonna feel like this was a failure of the.
Mm-hmm.
Um, Christine?
Uh, yeah, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to follow up with the comment that was made earlier regarding the house in order, I wholeheartedly agree. Uh, uh, for me and from the materials I reviewed uh, from the Council of Great City Schools. Our number one function as a school board is reduce student outcomes. Everything I've seen so far in my four-year tenure on this board has been producing student failures. Producing lack of opportunities, restricting opportunities, not using funds, stripping pairs, stripping intervention, is stripping of restorative, uh, wanting to strip restorative practice, uh, officers or stripping them. Uh, getting rid of the chief academic officers, getting rid of people that were from our alliance grant, our directors, our curriculum writers. Uh, like, at the end of the day, how are we gonna produce any kind of positive outcome that's going to get student success? If we continue to strip all the resources that leads to what's actually impacting the student directly? It's just, it just seems that this focus on money, money, money. But yet we've shown that even if we receive money, we're not using the money responsibly. Uh, we keep getting these emails too from council members. Uh, we have dilapidated school buildings, that's a fact, it's unsafe, that's a fact. The facilities master plan showed that we have about a billion dollars in repairs, that's a fact. Yet this constant wanting to keep empty classrooms, empty unsafe buildings open, at the cost of what? How does that help the student? How does it help all the students? Yeah, our house is not in order. And I don't see why the state or the tax dollars of the state of Connecticut has to go towards a failing district that refuses to close buildings built in the eighteen hundreds that's never been remodeled. It's just, we can't even show that we're responsibly using the money for the betterment of the children. This is not a, this is not just a game to keep the dollars in the black, but keeping the dollars in the black so that way our students can succeed. We're stripping our our elementaries and middle schools of assistant principals. Yeah, it's just, there's no thought into the process of how that impacts today-to-day of the students. And so it's just, uh, I, I, I'm gonna just disregard what was said in the past because ignorance is bliss. There's money that was spent that just came out of COVID dollars that would use it or lose it. So if if individuals don't want to go and read, that's, that's their loss and and I can't, I can't cure insanity. But our house is clearly not in order. The focus, the last focus is the child, the student in the city of Bridgeport. Our resources being offered to them are not being spent responsibly. So I don't see why the state should give us more money, that's why I haven't advocated. Uh, years and years, okay, yeah, the city now, if I have a five-bedroom house and it's just me in there and I cannot afford it, you must downsize. We have several classrooms where it is just five to ten kids in there. Yet we don't downsize and we can't even show results for those kids in those classrooms. Because the majority of our students are below grade level. And so I believe the house in order needs to put who's our priority and our priority needs to be the children and how we're gonna be able to service them.
Mr. Regina.
I think to your point that you said earlier, you said earlier, that the state came in in January. That's when they came, there was a vision, there was a uh, a telescope mark, it started in January. So, this board, the way it's functioning now, it's not that same board that they were giving a report about. That's why I say what I said earlier, you know. That's why I said what I said earlier, because it's not the same board that was functioning when they got a letter back in December third, that's not the same board. It's actually the same people that are talking about the house is not in order. Yeah, it wasn't in order because you didn't do nothing to help to get this house in order. I'm a new board member, so there's six members of this board that are fairly new, at that time was less than a year, six people. You can't say the board of the past is the same one that's right now when there was a dysfunction that was happening many years before. There were six people brand new to this board. Perfect opportunity to start fresh, hit a nice reset button that I've been talking about from the first day I became part of this board. Because you have people on this board that have never read this, this policy, they're never ready. But they were using the old policies, not meeting the top, the one that, that was implemented by this board, the same people that didn't, that implemented it from the beginning. But they were using the old one, but they were the ones that were in the board. You know, there's only three senior people on this board, Christine, Betty Perez, Joseph Kondavik and Albert Bennigan. Those are the most senior people here, they have four year plus. Everybody else is under two years.
But taking that thought, let's move forward and get help.
Right.
Um, I'm still trying to figure out, there's an expectation that something has to change. It may be that we've made the change and we're happy now, but I think we again, reading the comments, there's still some places that I think people still have some disagreements. So if our expectation this evening is to come out with, I'm gonna say two or three now, maybe it'd be one, folks, it'd be better than zero. But if this board doesn't want to utilize its time to say, what can we do going forward to make us a more effective leadership governance team? Then I'm not sure that this conversation is helpful because that's what we need to, we need to learn from your comments, from your expectations and say, uh, you know, there was one where people um, are sometimes not necessarily treating each other with respect, for example, that that was pretty obvious from some of the comments. So, there's got to be a way of this board articulating that we have a, one of our performance expectations is that we're gonna work harder at creating a, that safe place. And many of you said, I now feel safer than I used to, but how do we, how do we make that built into the DNA of this board, so it isn't something that just happens because Jen is more you know, better at doing something than maybe someone else was. We need to focus on that kind of work or this evening will not really be helpful to you.
Yeah, like, um, I think a lot of the decisions, you know, need to come from Dr. Avery. We, we, a lot of times we advocate, like, not, I didn't say advocate, but I mean, we speak like we know better. And I said, I I know, I've said it a couple of times, we need to listen to the, to the experts, I like, I I like the opinion of the expert. I don't know why, you know, a lot of people, a lot of other people don't, but I think that we should always defer to the superintendent and for for anything that, you know, or his staff that, that their background is like the, you know, that's their, that's their background. So, you know, like I said, and it's been times where Dr. Avery and his staff, they've been the first, you know, when they, when they say, you know, I heard George tell them, oh, you know, bring us some, you know, things that we he was, him and his staff were the first people to 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 take a pay cut. So, you know, I I applaud them for that, I I don't think they should have been, to tell you the truth. But there was, that I was there making a step towards trying to help this, move this process forward and and said, I didn't hear nobody else say, advocate, which I I'm not advocating for anybody, but nobody else came forward and said, you know, I'll take a pay cut so we could help, and nobody did that. Nobody's asking anybody. Nobody's asking anybody else to do it. So, you know, I, I, I think that there's a lot more options that we pursue. They know that we're spending a third of our budget on, out of, out of district services and stuff like that. How about, how about we bring about fifty million back and spend twenty million on a school or something like that? And, you know, that's, that's, that's money, right? You know, there's ways that we can, you know, have, there's plenty of ways. They haven't pursued all it, they haven't gave them, Vanessa, Vanessa has been saying, that's just been frustrating, our financial, they've been frustrated because they haven't given them a lot of options that he knows are out there to save money. So, you know, I think that we need to start putting everything on the table. We haven't put everything on the table.
I, I will say, and again, and not to jump forward because I wanted to keep this going, but there were a number of comments about board members not necessarily staying in their lane and letting the superintendent be the superintendent. You know, I want to pursue that a little bit because that came up over and over again in the comments. Um, but I'll, I think you had your hand up next.
Yes, please, thank you. The only way we can keep forward is let it go the past. We don't let it go the past, we're going to keep delivering the same. We have to let it go. We, we met in one moment here and we had to work together, like I said, he's the superintendent, we have to support him. And we know in the bylaws and everything as a board member, we have to protect him, you know, because he's the person, you know, he got nine balls, he know that. So working with a good, with good communication, let it go the past because that's what the reason you're here to help us. And I'm very glad you guys are here. That's what we need, you know? People want to stay here, you know, to guide in what's going on and talk with that favor and it's coming to keep forward. But we're going to be talking about the past and throwing rocks. Listen, before you throw rock, be sure, you know, be, before you throw rocks, your house is glass. So let's let it go because I'm tired about talking about the past. This is past, past, done, finito, bye, adios. Let's be present and let's keep forward because Ken's watching us. He was watching us. The whole Connecticut is watching and they know our reports in the first page of anything. So let's keep forward and there's help, uh, Dr. Avery, the people, cabinet, and then while here, one even, our kid. Want to say that, thank you.
So aligned with that, however, it's some, something, and I'll get to you in just a second, Christine. Uh, uh, thanks, because I can't see the screen behind me, so if somebody points, it's really good. Um, one of the things that, um, I think we need to work on is, or you need to work on is that communication with the superintendent. So, you know, talking about not getting information quickly enough, you can't just say, do it better. You have to come to some agreements on what are we willing to sacrifice in order for this to happen? That's, that's a two-way conversation. We'll talk more about that in the next session when we discuss the superintendent relationship with the board, um, talking about who does what. I think that's, but it's important to establish those because, um, several of you have said superintendent is CEO and we should, and as I see it, there's a breakdown, a lack of trust, not in Dr. Avery, but in the superintendency. And because of, and I don't think it was just even necessarily just the last superintendent, because you've gone through a number of them over the last few years. So there needs to be a different level of relationship now. And I think there's an opportunity there for all of you to figure that out with Dr. Avery or depending on what happened with the permanent superintendent, you certainly want to have those conversations at, at the appropriate time. Um, I know, again, we have very little to say about what the state's looking at, other than trying to read their expectations and help you do that. But I did suggest to them that at some point they may want to, um, require or it's, um, suggest, um, that you have a, a good solid retreat when you start with the new superintendent to have these kinds of conversations upfront. So we don't have surprises. Who's going to make the proper, the proper decisions? Who's going to talk to staff? Who's going to do those types of things? It's helpful to do that right from the beginning. So, um, I'm going to stop. I think Christine had her hand up next and then, um, let's, might be Mr. Traver. Christine?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment regarding the deference to the expert. I mean, with my four years on this, I see a fear-based central office, meaning that there's a lack of control with board members. Yeah, Bridgeport has one of the largest voter apathy in the state with probably like one, one to two percent of voters turning out. And yet the board is not the expert. And I've seen experts retract what they believe is actually good resources for our students, going back to the students, because they fear the board will retaliate and have them lose their jobs. And it's clear on the record that we have employees in the district and county superintendents that are fearful of the board retaliating against their children, just making slander and defamatory statements on Facebook. You know, the, the, the experts can't be the experts with this Bridgeport board. The experts can't be, no one on this board, maybe the most, the highest capacity of certain education is just a teacher. No one's been a principal, no one's been an AP, no one's been a coach, let alone lead a school district. But the experts can't be an expert. And one of the problems too is just the disconnect. Our acting was our deputy. And so a lot of stuff that was fully aware as to how we're going to save money, the sudden change is not because an expert opinion. It's because for, for job survivorship, I need to adapt to this board, not in the best interest of children. Not in, not because we're going to see growth, we're not going to see economic opportunities coming for our kids, nothing. It's just to please a few board members that got on by, if they're lucky, three thousand votes or because we had such, such high turnover that there were seats available and very limited applicants. You know, like a part of this too almost feels like it's putting the cart before the carriage because, uh, because we have an election where five seats are going to turn. And, and so, you know, my thing is always, I agree with differing with the experts, but when the experts are scared to actually do what's best for children, uh, because it becomes a financial security or some other motive of fear retaliation from the board. Because this board is well-known by their different posts to be retaliatory towards, uh, either members or members of cabinet if they don't get their way. And that kind of mob-like or racist or however you want to phrase that mentality, that's never going to yield any kind of positive results for children, let alone have us actually get the right expert opinion. Because holding a gun to someone's head, and this is just a metaphor, and telling them to say this, just because it's coming out the expert mouth, doesn't mean that it's necessarily good. But because this board and certain members that still serve on this board may have the paradigm that now they believe they're in power and control, not because they're serving the messenger's kit, but because they want personal power and control, that the board's so much better and it's functioning. No, our kids are still failing. Our kids are still not getting the quality education they deserve. We still have a budget to balance. And so I would love to rely on the expert, but I know the truth is a lot of the, the experts that are here now, and they might actually feel a lot safer now that the state has intervened to limit this board from threatening and bullying the experts around. But there's a lot of disconnect from the last administrations I saw to now that even I will say, I, I'm apprehensive of believing the expert because the expert, in my opinion, has just changed to go along with the narrative of the board. And, and I don't see how that's going to yield anything positive for the students. So I would love to, to yield to the expert, but, um, I, I just think that there's a lot of stronghold, uh, mob-like personalities that are not geared towards the interests of children or personal power. And then that interferes with the expert being the expert for the best interest of the students in this district. So, uh, that's, that's just what I want to add to it. It's just all these people talking about, you know, uh, and now this current, it's the same people. It's just, uh, powers changed, but nothing's gotten better for the kids. And the same people that talk about, oh, it's a better board because they've used bullying techniques, getting people out of office, continuing instability. It, it, it doesn't make it a better district for any child. And we're going to see that clearly in the data for the students. And that's another thing, like when it comes to actual student data and performance, it, it shows that this is not a functioning district.
Thank you.
So I would, I would stick with the last houses and the rocks, but I think I'd go with the, that he was without sin cast the first stone. Um, instead, I used to play around with all of them in my class. Um, and move on from after that one. Uh, the fact of the matter is we are functioning on a level that most people in the city feels is a refreshing change. And, uh, this city has a historic, um, uh, historically divisive history on the board event. And it's not just the people in this room, it's many of our predecessors on all levels. Um, and so, uh, people have found the last few months to be amazingly different. Um, and, uh, it should be a goal to continue that. Um, and I asked you at the last meeting, how are we going to rate ourselves when we've already made a major change? And we have, and that should be a goal to continue that change. And I would urge us to try, keep in mind that, uh, people are participating more, people are talking more, we are exchanging ideas. We can disagree, I get that, and at least we're hearing each other disagree. Um, and that's really important. Um, and without, without trying to be provocative and disagreeing with anybody here at this point, I think it's important that we hear each other disagree. Um, and so that's the beginning of having rational discussion is, is that we all get to articulate our point of view and we hear from each other and hopefully we find some common ground and move forward. And I think you're seeing that more and more. We had some very interesting votes at the last board meeting last week, uh, as to who voted with who on what issues, uh, including, I think Christine and I voted on the same way on an issue, um, which was unique. Um, so I, I think that, uh, that's what we need to continue doing.
So, but, so I want to push, not push back as much, but get you to articulate. So what is that? Because if, if you, a goal doesn't have to mean we have to do something, I mean, we want to pick up where we are right now and keep moving or?
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
So what's, what is it that's happening that you can articulate as the board is currently doing this and we've worked towards?
We're having full and open discussions. Um, and that's what we want to keep doing. Um, and, and, and so we're listening to each other, we're discussing things in a way that we weren't doing before. And so now we're doing that and we're having those, those complete discussions around the issues before we take the vote. And in taking those votes, we're having different votes than we've had before. Um, and, you know, that's just the beginning of, of having a better board, a healthier board than we've had before. And we're not all agreeing on everything about everything. And, and I, I think in that issue, Maritza voted a different way than I did and Christine voted the same way. I didn't, it was just, and Joe and I didn't vote the same way. It was, it was a, it was a weird vote, but it was like a reflection of what the board is doing differently. Um, and so.
So, and, but I, I heard that from several comments, but I also heard comments saying the contrary to that. So not everybody agrees with you, at least when they were taking the, in the confidence of the podium.
The facts feed for themselves in the votes at the last board meeting. Um, and, you know, it, 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 it didn't make everybody happy. But we had a, a healthy discussion and healthy votes that not everybody liked the outcome, but it was different than before. And that's what's better about the board and the direction we changed it. And that's why I somewhat resented the, the State Department event coming in and saying, we don't like what you're doing, but we already started doing it. Let us keep doing what we've done, and that is what we're doing. And it is a healthy change. And so that is a change that we should get credit for and we want to keep doing is having these healthier discussions. So Andre is talking and saying where he disagrees with us and, and that's good. That's a good thing. Um, and I, I think that's all better. Um, you know, I don't agree with what he said a minute ago, but he's disagreeing with me and that's all good.
I'm going to push up on Nick's part in terms of looking at structures is if the, the best way to ensure that you continue moving in this direction, that flywheel effect, it's being in the right direction is to, to be able to identify what it is that you're doing now that's different than what you were doing. Is it just simply that you're just, it's more of an interpersonal issue? Or are you following bylaws that you weren't following? Are you sticking to bylaws that you weren't sticking to? Just so we understand what you are doing now so we can replicate it and move that train forward.
I think the chair is letting everybody have their say. And everybody is speaking and feeling like they have the right to say their piece and disagree with each other. And
There's a lot of facilitation, I want to give this to you, you have an argument to this, yeah, so.
Thank you. So, um, in terms of the survey and the comments, I've reviewed them and one thing that I will say, um, it is, at least for me, it was very intimidating coming into this board. Um, because just a few months ago, it's not the way it is now. But I will say, um, when I did step in and got sworn in, it almost felt like we were always working reactively. Like there's a fire, we have to put it out, let's put our breath together and figure this out. And, and now, at least, um, in the last Finance Committee meeting, we were thinking about, okay, we have to make these major budget cuts. But if we do get properly funded, what are those things that we would bring back? So we're starting those conversations on being proactive, which is kind of where as a board, I feel like we should be living it, being proactive and not so much reactive. Um, so those are conversations and, um, items that we've actually brought up to, um, Dr. Avery as well. So just kind of want to put that out there. Yes, we are dealing with the issues that we have to because of the situation we're in. But we're also trying to look beyond and into the future as well.
Yeah, I think you hit the nail on the head with what you said, although certainly now we are born, we're staying within policies. We are staying within things, we're looking at that and to her, to exactly her comment and to Ms. Traver, that we have a chair now that is working to have everybody inclusive, which was completely different to what we have last year. You know, and we were silent, we were, you know, ridiculed, we were disrespecting, all that stuff was happening and we didn't have a voice. To have discussion like what Mr. Traver said, you know, to, to my colleague, Mr. Woodson, uh, you know, in the last two months, three months, we've heard so much insight coming from him directly that we never heard all last year. And that's my opinion. And it's great to hear his thing because we, we don't mind having disagreement. I know some of us don't mind, other people just think disagreement means that we're fighting with it. No, that's part of discussion, that's part of having a dialogue. We were not able to have this. It was a controlled atmosphere. And that's what was going on before, it was a dictatorship, that was what was going, and that's why it's different, that's why it was hard for me to, you know? They received a letter December third. All of a sudden in January, the state comes in, January ninth, we know it was the first meeting we had with them. So they were only going with what they saw before, January ninth. Nothing forward from it, and this is a completely different board. You know, and to pick up the leadership that we have right now, understood what was, I guess, happening last year and was able to say, okay, I want to do this differently. It was her vision, I, I can't speak for her whatsoever, but we knew that it was going to be different automatically. We had a hope for that. Why? Because we were all, now have a voice, we can all talk and not, not be silenced, completely silent. I'm talking about silenced by microphone, we can have meetings now in public, with the public, or not with them, in the public, but not with the public. We can have that now, before it was taken away from the public. We are a public official, we were voted, some of us, not all of us, but we were voted in, so we didn't have that. So yes, now we have a better structure, we're trying to stay within those guidelines, we're learning more about them. Like I said before, there's people that have never read the bylaw whatsoever, the old human president or whatever we got today, but they haven't read them, they don't understand it, you know? Mr. Avery, my understanding is he's the commanding chief, he's the one that think, he is, we hired him to do a job and it's him to bring forward the programs, it's us to help him and guide him, but nowhere in here that I see in the bylaw is for us to be, uh, trying to demand achievement of that stuff. You know what? I know one thing that this board has never talked about, but I've voiced it all the time. Over a hundred classrooms are being taught by permanent or substitute or, or temporary subs. How is a district is ever going to move forward and a higher thing, and it has to do with funding, unfortunately. How are we going to move forward? We have over a hundred plus classrooms that being taught, I started by the, how are our students going to learn? I'm sorry, I don't know who's teaching that. You know, talking about instruction, I'm talking about instruction, over a hundred classrooms. I mean, that's what I want to try to fix and help, to try to fix this to that where we can get proper instruction in a classroom, where they, where they can get it growth and that we can get better achievement. And that's the standard that the state has, not me, I, I just read it and learned it and learned from those experts that we're talking about.
I'm going to call on you next. Joe has had a lot of opportunities, I'll give him one right after you, but you get to go first.
Um, I guess I, I, I agree with, uh, with Medina, but, but I agree with Mr. Medina, but, but.
We, 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 we're, we're trying to run a.
We, 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 we're, we're trying to run a business. Now, like you said, they, they, you know, they talk about, about, um, you know, stuff like, like my thing is student teacher ratios. And, and, and in our contract, it says that we could have up to twenty five students and twenty nine high schools, something like that. If you're not being physically responsible, but you want the state to give you money, you know, how, that you can't have them both, you know, we, we, we're trying to do something hard, we're trying to do something that's, that's, I mean, I, I'm sure it's been done somewhere, but you know, people, I don't know what, what type of bubble people live in, but this stuff that's happening in Bridgeport is happening all over the United States. So I was just going to say, I was, I was just reading an article that came in Connecticut Post, I think it was Sunday. I just left my phone. But oh, it was, it was about, unlike anything we ever seen, how COVID has caused issues in Connecticut school five days later. All the issues that we're talking about here, it's nothing new. It's nothing new, it's just how you deal with it. Who, who are the people that you have in, that you have in, in a responsible position that, that deal with it? And our people that we, that aren't dealing with it the best that they could, you know, it, it's nice, it's not anything new.
What, what's roughly the Bridgeport budget this year?
Three hundred and fifteen million?
Three hundred and fifty million. So you're talking about a ten percent shortage.
Facts, three hundred and nine.
Three hundred and nine, and we're talking, I last, I heard about thirty one million dollars.
Short.
Short, so that's about ten percent. And while the numbers were drastically different, our budget was twenty three million dollars, but we got cut two point three. So we had the same ten percent cut. We had to lay out ten percent of our teachers, we had to lay off every parent professional, we stopped buying anything. No field trips, no anything, and, and we had to oversee that. And, and Bonefield, again, very different demographics, well, in some ways, very different demographics, in other ways, not. But the, the reality was, we had to struggle with, and, and what we had to do was trust our superintendent and say, you got to help us find this money. And when he came back with proposals, sometimes we liked them, sometimes we didn't. But we had to, the overall picture was better in his eyes than anyone else. And but, so that's one example where we did have to make those tough decisions. And I'm not giving any of you, any, I'm giving you all the props in the world for having to deal with this because it is horrible, especially those of you who've been on the board a while and it's felt like you're building all this time, and all of a sudden you're getting ganks and rung out from under you. But.
I got one more point, too, I want to say two.
Okay, one more, and then Joe.
Like, you know, and everybody was saying I was right, because I was getting the comments online too, and I, and Facebook. But what people don't realize is you don't come into a position, like even, you know, Ms. Him and I said, you don't come into this position just knowing everything, like you hit the ground running, nobody. So it took time, you have to listen, you have to understand, you have to know the history. You can't just be speaking on stuff. And I understand that people went to meetings at Hartford and stuff like that, but it's nothing like sitting here, getting the information, making the hard decisions, like whether somebody's job is going to continue and stuff like that, you know. There's nothing, there's nothing like that. So just so people know, I wasn't just not listening and agree with anything, I was listening. Really, really paying attention to what's going on, trying to get a feel of what's going on, and then making a, a comment. You know, you can't just be speaking, just to be speaking, just to have your voice heard, so you're behind YouTube or whatever, it's not, that's not the point of what we be here.
Thank you.
We, we, we just want to, I, I just want to be informed before I spoke.
Okay, Joe, you're going to be last. And then I wanted to see if we can narrow down to a couple of performance goals that this board can agree. Because we don't walk out with that, the state's going to be looking over our shoulder and saying, well, you failed and they failed, but minus points. I don't want that to happen. So I, and it might be just continue what we're doing, but I wanted, we should walk out of here with some acknowledgement that this board is going to do something over the next six months, year, whatever, to improve, whatever that means.
I think this will go towards actually creating a goal and in staying in all lanes. The first thing, first and foremost thing we need to do is understand our lanes. To understand that the state statute empowers us and demands of us, the Board of Education, to deliver a balanced budget. Board of Education could be held liable for a shortfall in that budget. The Board of Education's lane is to manage the budget, to hire the superintendent, to be involved. That's why every time there's a cut that comes, the Board of Education has to vote on it. What is being suggested by listening to the superintendent is we're redundant. We don't have to, we shouldn't have to vote that every single thing that's put before us, but any superintendent should be like it. But that's not how it is, we are responsible for this budget, this is our budget. Yes, the superintendent is supposed to bring us suggested cuts. And we could also bring cuts, we could also bring alternatives. As a thinking board, as a participating board, to rely on one person without question is to advocate your responsibilities that we all ran for and or got appointed for and sought out this position to do, to be stewards of the tax dollars that we give. Superintendents, if the only job was to hire the superintendent and let him do his job, they could just let the mayor, if the state statute was intending on that, they would just let the mayor appoint the superintendent and be done with it, there would be no Board of Education, we would be useless and redundant. So first, we got to understand our role in the budget process and in other processes in order to carry out the mandates of the state, to understand what goes on.
And a lot of that's going to come up in our next session. So this one, we're not ignoring it, but that's going to be all of a sudden. Or I said she was the last, but you haven't spoken yet tonight.
And it's going to be really quick, I promise.
Okay.
Yeah. So, um, although I agree that this board has done a really great turnaround since the Christmas break. Really, like I see the difference. What my comment is to that is, is it a positive difference because the state is involved and has implemented this technical support team? Me personally, these are my feelings. What happens after the state walks away and says, you know what, you guys are good? I'm just saying, thinking forward, you guys are good, we don't need to be involved anymore. Does all the chaos return? Because leopards never change their spots, they never change their spots. And so although I agree that things are almost, honestly, they're very much better. At least we're respecting one another, because that definitely wasn't going on over the last year and a half. But how long is it, is it going to be something that's going to last the distance? Are we going to learn from the experience of you two being here and the technical support team being here? And that's a comment, that's not a question, that's what I'm telling you how I feel.
But, but grace is a very interesting concept, because we, we can all be good for a little while. Yeah, please.
I, I agree, and there's still room for growth because five people turned us in on time by the five P M deadline.
Well, four actually on time, and then we got another one after the.
Yeah, and so.
Nine, but it was two came in after the deadline, and then.
You're right.
Following week, there were three more came in.
Yeah, and so eight altogether out of nine. And we didn't all turn it out at the right, at the deadline. So like, there's still so much, like, if we are trying to do this change and, and we've seen some changes, but we're not even doing what the, the bare minimum is, we had a month to do this, three weeks, three or four weeks to do this. And so, and that's not, I'm not pointing out who did or didn't do it, but the point is, like, this was just the bare ass, like one hour to do this, if that, right? And, and, and you have three and a half weeks to do it, four weeks to do it. So. And then we got our hands slapped for it. So, you know, there's, there's, there's still so much room to actually grow. Like, we, we're saying there's growth, we're saying there's, there's changed behaviors, but is there really? When you don't, when this bare minimum thing couldn't get done.
One of the things I think Jody still talked about, so I'm not going to sell some of it, but the idea of protocols, reading, expect reading norms, beyond just like a, a policy or a bylaw that says, here's how the board's going to act, but really to get you to, I've seen some boards even establish some sort of list of, these are the things I'm going to adhere to, and then everybody signs it, for example. I'm going to leave that to Jody to maybe articulate that a little better. But I, I acknowledge the idea that I still think you need to be able to say to the state, we're feeling like we're in a better place, this is a plan of action to ensure that that stays that way or that we continue in this direction. And I'm, I'm needing some help wording something for you that would say, we're going to continue professional development to improve our skills, improve our protocols, improve our, our interactions. I, I just, the absence of that leads to exactly what, you know, not to mention, whatever you create as a culture in the next three or four months, what happens in November when you have a brand new board? Can you be able to say to these new people, well, you know what, this is how we do things now? Rather than, you know, we've been this way, we've been that way, what are we going to be like next time? But then you have done this long enough that it's part of their culture and that someone new coming in is going to say, I either want to be a part of that or I accept that this is how we do business. But you have to be able to articulate it, and you have to make sure that it's, it's entrenched in here. And you don't have a lot of time, so.
I, I heard just going, going to Joe's comment about lanes. I, I think lanes is a really critical element that has to be drawn in somehow to the goal, because, yeah. There, there's a thing that Joe said, as, as a retired superintendent, I, I might disagree with in terms of the word managed budget. I, I managed the budget as a superintendent, the board voted on the budget, it was the board's budget. But I was the one who managed it day to day and ensured that the budget was being carried out effectively. And, and the Finance Committee met monthly, the Finance Subcommittee met monthly. They looked at all the accounts, they looked at where their overages, where their underages, they looked at how I was spending the money, and had questions. And from their, through their questions, I was able to go back to my administration and redirect our efforts in allocating the funds. So we weren't, we weren't in April wondering how we're going to make up a six million dollar difference. We were talking about that as we were looking at the forecasting model that my finance director was coming up with. So, but, but I think your point about lanes is really critical, because words matter. And, and, and if we don't establish, if the board doesn't establish what its lane is, it's not, it's not a rubber stamping, rubber stamping lane. It's understanding what its role is. It is the board's budget, it is, it is adopted by the board. But is the board reading contracts? Is it, when I was last here, is the board's job to sit and read a contract with a vendor around that, that was voted on by the board to have as a vendor? Yeah, I don't know if I, I think it's a good use of the board's time for nine people to look at with legal, with a legal contract. That's what you trust the superintendent to do with his team. But you certainly want to oversee the, the vendor's work. And for the superintendent, we'd like a report on what this vendor is doing for our district. How much money do we spend so far? How much money is we expecting to spend? So you don't end up the end of the year over budget and liable for being over budget. So that's, when I talk about lane, that's a really critical conversation around your role as a policymaker, your role to elect, to appoint a superintendent, to give the superintendent the opportunity to put his team together so you can hold the superintendent accountable for the team he put together. So he can't come back to you and say, this isn't my team, it's your team. And they can hold me accountable for, for your team, that's not a fair position. I wouldn't take, I wouldn't take a job as a superintendent if I didn't have the opportunity to develop my, to bring in my team and have the board hold me accountable for the team I voted in. So it's those conversations, when I think about lane, that are really important. And I think that's a really important foundation of goal for this board.
Let me add to that, I think that's important, I mean, I've, I've kind of set, and I've, I've kind of experienced probably more so than anybody else in this room, the different nuances of, of old, new, next one in line for the position, but I think it's a trust issue. It's not the trust issue of anybody that sits here, it's just the position, you know. And I think there's been so much history in Bridgeport regarding the trust of the superintendent. And it just, it just hovers over everything and everybody that's in this seat, you know. And, and that's hard for any superintendent to, to, to grapple with and to deal with. Because like you said, you would never take a job, you know, if you researched that district, you Googled every board member, you Google the district perspective on the day to day, you're all in the news. Who would want to even begin to take, take a job, you know? But I, I've lived it for, for the year and a half, guys. I've seen so much damn potential of what we could do as a district. But it's just, it's muddy, the water is just really, really muddy. But I see so much potential, and I, I've been through all kinds of boards. I've gained thirty plus years in the business, and so I get it. And I've seen boards snap out of it and do really, really well, you know. And I, and my hopes is that this board would be able to do the same thing, you know. But it's, it's the lanes, you know. It's, it's how we weave through the different lanes, because we want to on individual occasions. And not all the time, but it's just, it's not a straight path to where the team, the team. Ms. Baptiste Proraz made a, a very valid point. My team is so gun shy, guys. They don't want to do anything because they don't know what's going to happen, you know. At the beginning of December, everything was targeted at them, you know. And it, and it was not intentionally, but it was just, there was so much stuff happening with individual board members that it was just, and I don't even think anybody realized what was happening, but it was happening. So I think it's just, we got to move away from that, you know, you know. And I lead differently than previous administrations. You know, that's just the way I do, you know. But I, but I also feel like I'm a pretty smart guy. I, I saw what happened to the previous administration, I'm not going to let that happen to me, you know, because why? You, you live and learn these things, you know, and so it's, it's understandable that my job is to try to give you the best I can give you every single day, you know, and I try to do that. And I feel we have an opportunity here with the state coming in. And when the state comes in, she said it, there, we, we could breathe a little bit, including myself, guys. I'm, I'm not trying to hide anything, but it, it's, it's refreshing to say, okay, I can go to that, that technical assistant team and I can say, hey, we need, I'm getting ready to come up with thirty two million dollars worth of cuts, guys. That's one of the hardest things I ever done as a, as a school superintendent, but I'm bringing it to you because board members want it. I'm going to lay it out there, I'm going to, it's going to be very succinct, it's going to be, but it's, it's, it's a process that I'm going to lay out to this board and have a, a good conversation around it. And maybe it's, it's, it wasn't quick enough for some people, and maybe it was, you know. But I think it's time for us to be able to figure out a game plan, you know. I think the timelines of the budget process, you can't always go back what happened five to six years ago. Life is different now, you know, experiences are different, situations are different in this district. So we have to plan accordingly, shift it a little bit, you know, but you still have a, you have a framework, but you can still shift it a little bit and still make it work for us, right? So that's hopefully what we're going to be doing collectively together moving forward.
And, and thank you for that. And I, what I also remember, and again, I'm sailing into Jody's side now.
I'm here for the time.
In the, in the comments, there were a number of comments saying that board members interfere with the operations of the district, which is a little different than second guessing the superintendent, you know, as you start to take on the leadership of the district more. So it's more of you leading rather than sort of reacting to situations. There's a difference between them challenging you as the leader or saying, I'm not sure I like all the budget recommendations, for example, versus then interfering with your ability to lead the district, where they're going to outside staff members or your such, or your administrative team, or even coming to you and saying, I want you to do this, or I think you should do that. That you work for the collective entity known as the Board of Education. And you've got to be very comfortable if any of your board members come to you and say, I think you should do this. Well, you know, we're going to talk to Jennifer, we'll put it on the agenda, and if you convince the board to vote for it, it becomes my work. And you need to be comfortable saying that, back to this sort of atmosphere of fear that we've heard from a couple people. You need to feel comfortable saying it, board members need to be able to listen to that and hear it. And if they think it needs to be done, then it becomes a board decision, it becomes your work.
But I, I also know that when you're, when you're coming to the board with thirty million dollars of reductions, I mean, I, I, I was in a position where I had to come to my board several different years with four billion dollar reduction. That, that, that's a change for you, I know. But, but, but my work was, as a, as a district leader, as a superintendent, was to make sure that my staff knew that, that these reductions, the names weren't going to be on these reductions, but a lot of your teachers know who these reductions are aimed at, they know our, in, in terms of numbers of years of experience. But your job is really going, it's when you're tied up, making sure and trying to control the communication path with your teachers, so they don't feel like they're being degraded or they're feeling like they're not being treated professionally. So that, that's, that's a really important role for you, and you want to make sure that as a superintendent, your, your board is aware of that role and that they're not. and that they're not taking they're not in your lane doing that kind of work.
Because that's a point, a good point that you make though, because that's it's you have different differences of opinions with that as well. Because do we have a chaotic perspective moving forward or not? So. But you could judge because you're you got feelings of everybody else in 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 front of your decision to provide those cuts. So it's so again, it's it's a mix, it's it's mixed. So we have to be able to be, you know, a happy medium there to be able to make that. So because it's going to be very difficult to be able to do, but.
And I'm assuming that you're not sitting in your office with a Sharpie, just executing stuff out on your own either. You're going to your staff and saying, at the principal level, what can you do in your building? What can you do in this department? And and you're collecting that and trying to make sense of what they're giving you.
We got that on the board. I mean, on on the horizon right now, I I solicited to them.
I'm going to pull us away from this conversation because that's next week. That's only next Monday night. We're going to be delving into this a little more. And um, it's going to be important that we remember what we talked about tonight.
But it's lanes, it's lanes.
Yeah, but final push for us to come up with something that says, here's what we want to do for the next six months or whatever, or whatever. Um, that's going to reinforce us as this all new, highly effective Bridgeport Board of Education. What do you, how do you word it so that you can say to the state? Because they're the ones that are asking for this. We are committed to doing X, Y, or Z in the next six months or a year in order to um better the work toward the Bridgeport Public Schools. And more importantly, the nineteen thousand nine hundred and seventy children that are were responsible for.
Can I suggest one?
Yes, please, I'm looking for something, please.
Develop and implement a comprehensive budget plan that ensures fiscal responsibility and sustainability for the next five years. That that really encompasses everything that this board should be doing. It should be one of the number one things of making sure that we're fiscally responsible for everything that we do. And then when you start digging into that, it's, do they have money to have curriculum? Do they have money to pay teachers? Do they have money to develop programs that's going to enhance the ability for kids to learn? So that development, developing it together, do a whole new restart on that. I think it would be a beautiful thing to be able to do uh moving forward.
Have I written that?
I do have it written down.
Good, could you email it to me tomorrow?
Yeah, I I will.
Um, but it but it speaks to, because part of I I think the dilemma that you face is you've got triage going on right now. The victim is bleeding out. And yet, you also have to be concerned about the wellness of the patient because that's the goal isn't to have the patient live. The goal is to have children learn. And so how do we preserve what we can? You know, I I mean, and again, for all the all the reasons I think that really makes sense to people, get rid of administrators. Well, if in order for a school to be successful, there needs to be a certain level of administration. That's your educational leadership. So we have to maintain enough of the system while we're cutting, gouging, stabbing, all the horrible things to say, this helps us get through the next six months, but we also have that five years. We have to be able to say, we plan on being better at teaching children math, English, whatever it might be. That's that's why we're all here. It's what drives all of you. There's a lot of things you have to do, but that's what makes this, that's why you're, that's your purpose.
Could we could we commit to 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 doing something that has something to do with the statistics that come in? Because this is one of the statistics that we had got in is that there's going to be a decline in population for the kids. So nobody, everybody's talking about keeping schools open, don't close this, don't. But we got a decline coming up in the next ten years in the population. What what are we doing?
Building plan is going to take ten years to implement, you know, give or take. Well, my assumption is that part of this study that you're doing also looks at projections for student enrollment.
You got to believe them. They they sometimes they act like they don't believe, you know, with the like, oh, no, how the kids be going down? We're getting a rise probably. That's what the study says.
There there's there's demographers out there. I mean, not always right. It's like weatherman, but but they do their best and they're based a lot of their stuff on data.
That's what we got to go by.
But I I think it goes back to the sort of Dr. Avery just talked about sort of a five year plan. That's going to include, and and again, that strategic plan. And I strongly suggest that that be a long term goal for this board is to establish a strategic planning process. And get understand, and I learned this from someone else, I'm not that much of a genius. The strategic plan is not more important than strategic planning. It isn't the finished document that is all inclusive. We have that because I've noticed in this district, what you call strategic plan is really the superintendent wrote some goals. We need goals, we can then, again, you all acknowledge that that was, this was full of, we need goals. So I I get that. But a strategic plan is more than that because it's not just nine people and the superintendent sitting in a room and writing something. You include your community. It's a really great, and we don't do this, so I'm not trying to sell us on something. So um, there are people that can really do a good job of that for you. To me, that's another long term goal for this board, to be in a position where we trust the the community to help us develop a long term plan that focuses on learning. Um, we still getting sidetracked a little bit, Joe?
Yes. Yeah, and to go, I would like, I like Dr. Avery's goal. It integrates what Mr. Woodson was speaking of because there will be cost savings in rightsizing our district possibly potentially in the future. That's going to be baked into the numbers. However, I would like to offer a friendly amendment, or in addition to Dr. Avery's thing, beginning with delivering a balanced twenty five, twenty six budget, while keeping in mind the rest of them because we need, we need a short term goal too, because that's the fire we need to put out right now and it has to have the most urgency. And to keep in mind that we still need to function as a district as we are making these cuts as well.
Josh, are we on the right, are are we on the right page of what you're looking for for tonight? Because I want to make sure we're focusing on that.
Yes, I think a finance plan is is one of those things that's really critical. That's also going to be the subject of the conversation when Ed Arum comes in to talk about finance. Because the state's expectation there is to develop a plan and processes for managing the budget more effectively. So it dovetails very nicely with Dr. Avery's suggestion. So your goal being followed through on that other session will be very helpful. So I I think that's a very good step. I don't know that finance is the only thing that you should be, you know? Um, again, there's been several people that have talked about the importance of learning. And should there be a goal saying we want to reemphasize within our meetings and our our board work, student achievement? And I really apologize because you had your hand up before and I did not go back.
Um, so something since I came on board, I had a great conversation with Danielle and she actually brought it up to my attention that we needed goals. So during all our conversations, I've actually been writing down adjectives like, what does everyone in the room feel that we need? And using that, I came up with like a list of different items that many different people throughout this room um put together. And I've used AI, artificial intelligence, to generate our goals. So they're impartial and all of that. So some of those, it it spit out six total goals. So one of them was around enhanced student achievement, which I believe Mr. Woodson and Akisha were bringing up. Ensuring fiscal responsibility, which completely covers what Dr. Avery was chatting about. Promoting constructive criticism. And I think this goes back to, you know, having that feedback. Even though we're not agreeing on something, we can still respectfully speak about it, hold ourselves accountable. Um, and I can send this to the team because it's kind of fluffy and I won't read off all of them. Yeah. Um, increasing workforce development for students and for teachers as well. Um, that's kind of long term because we're we're not in a situation where we can spend money on that. But going forward and being proactive is where we kind of want to live. Um, so um, that was one of the rules, um, goals. So the all in all, that's kind of what it came up with. Um, but yeah, just kind of wanted to put that out there.
I I enjoy doing that because I've done it with a couple of boards where you, because the hard part is you get all the stuff stickies on the wall and you have to compress some of the words, let the AI do it for you. That's one good job.
Five seconds was well.
Yeah, so and that may and it may be that last one is something that goes on the the um next set of goals, which is board district focus rather than what's this board going to do? Because the first ones are budget, working better together, focusing on student achievement. A lot of you in your comments made the comment um several times that we don't spend enough time talking about the data in our meetings, that we're not focusing on the achievement. Rather, we're talking about, you know, killer bees, buses, books, plus budget. Um, I add blowers because we fight over snow blowers sometimes too. Um, but.
Buildings.
Buildings.
I mean, not killing, yeah, absolutely, I'll let that one off. But um, I just built a PowerPoint slide I have seen, it has all of them on here.
Just a question, clarifying question for me. Um, is is there a chance that rather than writing a goal, that the board could write a theory of action that would basically say, if we do this, if we do these things, we will get this? So student achievement could be the end of that theory of action. But it would require, yep, looking at rightsizing buildings. It would require a balanced budget, it would require a budget that's directly looking at student achievement. So would that, is that?
I don't disagree, I think that's a good planning session for moving forward, yes. But I don't think that gets us where we need to be. Well, first of all, we don't have the time to do that. And and I'm not as skilled as others are in leading this, the action. Perhaps you are, it would give you the chalk next time. But um, and I I think when we get to the mission part, that may be an important part of the conversation. But for the purpose of tonight, are people comfortable with Maritza's three? Maybe incorporating a little better the language that Dr. Avery put in because I think he was a little more specific, which I think does, I, and again, I'm only speaking from my understanding, what I've heard. I think that's what the state is kind of looking for, is give us some action steps that will help us perform better. And I think being more specific to for this part of it, because again, we're going to have more goals in section five, where we can have a deeper conversation about that type of work. Um, but outside of that, with those, let's say those first three goals in particular, help address some of the things we've heard tonight.
Was it financial oversight, student achievement, and like working closely or them as one?
It's finance, I'm thinking if you could take Marissa, some of your goals that deal specifically with student achievement. And then and then the other goal perhaps around, you know, governance.
Yeah.
Around lanes and and identifying roles and responsibilities.
I'd also like to know which one of those um overlap with Dr. Avery because Dr. Avery had written out the five goals.
Oh, his his.
Those were just the basics, just to kind of focus the work for the next.
No, I I understand the reason for them, but I just, I think they're important. And I think that if some of what she was saying is overlapping, then we should take care of that. But I mean, you know, it it just sounds to me like I I don't want to reinvent the wheel. You know, he came up with a lot of great ideas that I think that they should be implemented. And maybe if she has something different than what he has, it it should be included.
So they're district, right?
Those are districts and that's going to be the subject of our fifth session together when we talk about.
Oh, we're talking about board goals.
This is what are you going to do?
Gotcha.
And so in full disclosure, I hope they're not listening, but how do we get the state off our back? What do we have to commit to? And I didn't say, what do we have to say? Because if you just say, don't do it, they're going to be, they're they're not interested in words and they're not interested in you being at the table, they're interested in seeing a change.
But just so I'm clear, what Dr. Avery has is district goals and what she's talking about are board goals, yes? Or no?
Or are they more your action goals for moving forward?
Yes, the other, the five is how we move forward by incorporating all those five different things to get us to a point where we can build a strategic plan at the end of that in order to be able to incorporate that into.
Right, that's more more long term.
Right, a long term. Short term, but long term at the same time.
Some of that's going to be a long time. All right, so.
I I just.
So we've got a goal for financial um wellbeing, for lack of a better term. But you said it, you articulated that really well.
And I had I have it written down. And we talked about student achievement, our learning objective, the learning goals, how to focus. I think the other one I wrote down was support social emotional wellness for all school, community. Oh, support is social and emotional wellness for all school, community matters. And that's that's just a very global thing for the board, social, emotional work. Because they need it too, they they get just as stressed out as we get. So I think it's important for that whole piece. If they focus in on that, they're going to take care of themselves, but they're also going to take care of, you know, staff, students.
So if we include shell, include modeling the behavior.
That's true.
Um, that might change that. The other thing I would say is probably, because another thing we've heard over and over again, bylaws, 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 meeting norms, protocols, that you need to establish a better understanding of how we're going to interact with each other. And I would, for the lack of a better term, call them meeting norms. And I think developing a set of those would be very important, just in terms of who's going to communicate with each other? How are we going to comport ourselves? Perhaps, and Jody will talk about, um, we may start our next session on some of this if we don't get moving on.
I think I can add because I want to make sure it goes with what my kind of was talking about. We 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 don't get to this and I know it's a responsibility of the superintendent to bring forward to us for us to approve. And I, being new on the board, this is my second year right now, um, is, you know, to identify our curriculum, to know what's working, what's not. Because I heard during the all last year that there was a lot of things going on, things that were purchased and not being used. That, you know, and I I don't know, we all know as a board, you know, what are our curriculum states, you know? What is it that he can bring that can save us money possibly or things that can work? That way, every campus is, you know, focused, leads to focus on, you know, achievement and getting, you know, uh, you know, growth.
So so in that, the the fifth meeting, when we talk about um goals, I think that's a good, I'll call it a short term goal. Or again, it's something that keeps going, but to ensure that the structure, construction at the best level because um it's curriculum, it's instruction, it's professional development, it's typed in all these different things. Um, it's like one giant tent that we all have to fit everything under. Um, how you can articulate that would be best done on that session. But I I do think it's important that you, because that's got to be why you do this. That's got to be the purpose of all this work is to focus on, if we do everything right, kids learn. If we don't do everything right, kids may not learn. And that's not what anybody wants.
You know, I say that more also because I want to know it, but also because I don't know if I'm wrong. And again, I speak with the board, not at the board and not at you, but towards you. I think because when people say that we're not, we as a board or actually me, that I am not focused on student achievement, you know, I haven't invented anything, any policies in ours or in any other policies of other boards and other states even that I've read that says that we have control over that. We don't have control over that. To me, it's superintendent takes care of everything else under, you know, as far as that. I know that he he or she that's in a position of superintendent, bring recommendations to the board to approve or to align of curriculums. I understand new curriculum, all that stuff. I understand that because I read it and I know that's one of the things. It's not us bringing a curriculum over to the superintendent or superintendent brings it to us. As a recommendation, this, this one is not working. I talk to the teachers, to the staff, you know, the staff, the directors or whatever. We feel this one is better and we can actually, you know, speed right through and get into it because the teachers know that it's something that's older maybe and it's been proven. Maybe another town next to us have it or not. But again, that's not our goal to bring forward a curriculum, it's the superintendent and staff, not ours.
Did you have, did you have a standing committee, a curriculum committee?
Yes.
We do.
Through instructions, of course, sir.
So so that would be a place where the board having, could establish or or having a curriculum committee could schedule through that committee, different presentations from various parts of the community that the superintendent would work with you to bring. We have a new literacy curriculum, a new um, a new science reading curriculum. Um, we would, that 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 committee would meet monthly, get a presentation and share back to the full board about what it heard and why, what, you know, and go through the various objectives of the of the curriculum and what it's going to do for students. What are the measures of success of the curriculum? And and really, and look at it again from from a a balcony level as to what this curriculum is doing, how it ties with other curriculum, how it's improving instruction. What are the metrics you're going to be looking at and asking the superintendent to provide to the full board to show that there's growth in these areas that the curriculum was going to address? So you're not actually, again, managing the curriculum, you're not proposing the curriculum. You're hearing about it and asking questions about it. You're hearing about it and asking questions about it and, and holding the superintendent accountable for results.
And, and that's gonna come up next week a little more, because when we talk about the, the barriers, the lines, lanes, expectations, board superintendent relationship, that's gonna all come up, I think, there. And that might be one of the things we want to touch on directly.
But that, that would, to me, that as an outsider, that would be, that would be, if I looked at your board and I were doing a, a analysis of your board, that would be, those would be the kinds of questions I would be asking. What do you know about the curriculum in your district? What, what, what mechanisms do you have in place to learn about those, those curriculum matters? What, what, how do you hold your superintendent accountable for results? So it's those kinds of, that's, that's board level conversation. Not, I think, I think this district should have this curriculum, and the superintendent needs to take this and run with it. It's overseeing his work there.
Pull this back one more time.
Okay, sorry.
I think we went so close, so close. I don't want to be that team, you know, last Bill Buckner, you know? I was a view old enough to remember Bill Buckner.
Please, don't bring it up.
So I, I think, if you could, and I'm gonna ask maybe that you send them to me. And I'm gonna try to take what I've heard, create something, share it back with you, make sure you're all happy with it. But I, I would like to be able to send the folks in, at the S D E that you reflected on this, that you thought through some things, and while you're very, you are happy with the direction you're going in, that you acknowledge here's some more work that has to be done. And the development of plans to do that will be forthcoming. Because I don't want to get mired into the solutions before we've really clearly agreed on what the problems are. Because too many boards spend their time on solutions when they haven't agreed on what the problem is. That always leads to chaos. Check it, make sure there's no little yellow symbols on it. And if we can walk away with that, then I won't feel like we wasted two hours or an hour and forty-five minutes. And I hope you don't feel that way.
Is it fair to say that there should be at least three goals? One dealing with student achievement, one dealing with lanes and governance, and one's dealing with fiscal.
I agree.
That's good.
Yep. I, I see possibly part of the lanes, one being a set of protocols that we all agree to.
Governance, yeah.
Yeah, governance, that, you know, we will work through the superintendent, we will be respectful, et cetera, et cetera. Some boards actually have this thing and they all sign it every year. They literally sign it as a pledge, but we don't have to get that specific just yet. But there are examples that we can provide down the road as well, to help with that.
Did we, did we leave out, we treat each other? Right.
Yeah, that's. Yeah, I'm, I'm gonna tell you what, let's go. Oh, absolutely, absolutely. Well, that gets into the protocols, because part of that is gonna be how we treat each other.
Yeah.
Right. But yes, but I think it's never to state that in the goal that we are gonna work towards working better together. Absolutely.
Yeah, and you have the goal.
Just wanna make this specifically in there.
Thank you for bringing that. And the more we reinforce it, that that's important, the better.
Yeah, because whether it happened before or after the state came in here, and I understand Ms. Casimir's point, we want to embed it in function.
Whatever happens in November, for example, that there's something, it gets, it gets embedded in how this board should function.
Right.
It shouldn't just be for the nine of us, it should be.
So we want to take a five-minute break?
Yeah.
And then, Jody can go in and, and.
If you need a break, yeah, we, we could keep going.
When you hit seventy and you have five minutes.
Our colleague today reminded me that I'm closer to the age of one nineteen than I am to the age of nineteen.
Ooh.
I didn't say that.
Oh, hell, it was another colleague.
A much.
A young guy, Congress. Closer to nineteen.
The last three weeks since Nick and I were last here, just to kind of give you a, again, I use the word time sex before, just to give you an idea of what, what I've been up to and what I asked you to do last week around the bylaws. I had one of those uncomfortable moments where as a facilitator or, or someone doing this work, making a statement around how great it was in your bylaw, and all approved in twenty nineteen. And this is when I got a few little fuzzy eyeball looks and said, you really did your homework. And so that, being the smart guy, that, that's a signal. I think I have one assumption, the board has a different assumption. But what was really important for me was to, through that experience, find out what your bylaws were. Because you, you guys know that CAVE is doing a policy project with you guys. And, and that started back in August and, and talking with superintendent and his team around what are the critical areas around this work? What are the urgent things we need to do? And then we can go from there and we can, we can chunk it out. Some districts, for example. Some districts, for example.
See, step in the hallway.
Take it out of the hall.
Thank you. So to make the long story short there, we, we've been, we've been engaged with a policy project with, with, with you guys. And, and that's going on for a three-year period. So we wanted to make sure that we started with the right urgent moves. And that was around mandated policies that were missing, mandated policies that needed updating. And that's important because if, for example, you had a complaint around a harassment issue and, and someone brought that complaint to the board or to the administration, and there wasn't a policy that directed the superintendent on how to act, who does what around this complaint, that person would then have the right to go to OCR, the Office of Civil Rights, and they would do an investigation. The first thing they would ask is, what's your Title IX policy? And if you said, we don't have a Title IX policy, or what Title IX policy? Then, then it becomes major issue for the board. So it's an issue of viability, but it's also an issue of time allocation, what your superintendent will be doing for the next three months with OCR to go to meetings and, and, and it's just not a place where you want to be. So the key thing around the board's policy work is getting your mandated policies adopted and getting your, your mandated policy that you have, but are need updating to get the old policy rescinded and the new updated policy adopted. And, and again, my only advice to you would be to, whatever you need to do, expedite that. And, and again, having been a superintendent in a similar position, I worked with my policy chair and came up with a strategy to, okay, we have twenty-three missing mandated policies, let's take four in a meeting and move, move, move them to adoption, bring them to the board. Let's not sit with it, let's get them adopted. And then, once they get adopted, you can then step back, and then you can begin to really look at those policies more carefully. Is this a policy where we can add our language to it? Can we tweak this a little bit? But you really want them adopted. And that's, and again, I, I suggest with the superintendent and with, with your, your policy chair to just sit through those and determine what are the twenty-three missing mandated policies? What's our plan for getting them adopted? And then also, there are other strategic things that you, that the superintendent and the board can do around getting those policies adopted. You can waive your two reads to get them adopted right away. You can, you can do a two-read, but then also not get into the, the wordsmithing that boards like to get into. We want to use the word shall or will or. What I will say to you around the CAVE model policies that we've given to your superintendent and, and for his, for his review, I don't do a lot of improvisation with, you know, improvisation is great for jazz. You know, John Coltrane couldn't improvise. I don't improvise when it comes to mandated policies. I look at the legislation, I look at what's required, and I basically take what's required, the legislation, and I put it in your policies. So most of the policies that are mandated are really like that. There are probably a handful that get into a little bit of nuance that the board can maybe put a fingerprint on. Save those for later, but get the ones that really need to get in there, in there. So, but, but also, let me just share with you some of my observations. I, I did look at a policy meeting on a Saturday morning on my, I was looking at my iPhone. I was looking at my record collection on Discogs, record collector. I know it's kind of sick.
Ancient.
Ancient, I know, ancient. Mr. Five Minute Bathroom Place, oh, yeah, Tommy, I need. So on my, on my cell phone, Bridgeport Policy Meeting comes up. I go, oh, that's interesting. So for two hours, I watched on a Saturday morning, the policy meeting. And, and, and I have to say, it was an excellent policy meeting. Dr. Dr. Sack, right, Dr. Sack? He did a great job of, of framing the policies, to discuss the policies, to set the policy committee up, to have a good intelligent consideration around the policies. And, and I believe there were three or four policies that the policy committee brought back up to the board. And I, I, I watched a four and a half hour meeting, the board meeting, which was not as much fun.
We both watched that.
We both watched it, yeah. Again, I, my, my, my impression was that it got into a little bit of that quagmire, a little bit of the wordsmithing and, and away from get them adopted, that sense of urgency to, to taking that point of luxury and saying, let's talk about this a little more. Let's think strategically about when we, when we adopt it, and when we, when we talk to kids about it and things. All really important things. But I, but I also think that when you're talking about a missing mandated policy, you get it adopted and then get them all adopted over the next three or four months. That's a really ambitious schedule. And then you can step back and say, just as we were talking about, we're not putting the fire out anymore. Now we can be proactive, we can start looking at our non-mandated policies. We can, we have a pretty good group, we know what we're doing, we're thinking policy. Let's continue working with CAVE on, on the three thousand series and the four thousand series. Let's look at our business practices. So get the mandated policies adopted, get the mandated policies that need updating, rescind the old, put in the new. And then, and then we'll be moving in a really good direction in policy wise. But, but again, I, for my, for my sense, you know what policy is, you know the importance of policy, you know how to talk about policy, you don't need a lecture from me about that stuff. But I can certainly help you be strategic to get those adopted policies, and I'm happy to do that. Yes?
Doesn't matter if we put them in there in the middle of the school year, end of the school year.
Not at all. Again, I, I, having heard the conversation, which I thought was a really intelligent conversation around drug and alcohol, the marijuana policy, I, I, I'm sure that when a kid violates the law around drugs, you're doing something that, you have an administrator sitting around going, I have a policy, it's fine. I'm sure of that. So having the policy now creates the, gives you another level of fortification around that. And, and certainly you can talk to your, your community, we just adopted this policy, which reinforces our practice around what we're doing, but now it gives you an understanding of what we're doing, why we're doing it. And, and here's the policy to review, so you can talk to your child about it, and so you can really do some of that backfilling. But then again, that's, that's strategy work, and that's where you want to be with your superintendent and talk to him, with him about how we're educating our community about these policies we're adopting. It's an ambitious schedule, but I think your community ultimately is gonna be pleased with the fact that you're taking this role seriously and you're getting them approved and adopted.
Just curious as to how many mandated policies that are not in our policies? Like, do you have a number?
I do. You have, you have twenty-three.
Oh, my God.
Missing mandated policies. And you have twenty-three policies that are mandated that you have, but they need updating.
They need them.
And for those policies, I think the role there would be rescind, when, when it's not, when it's brought to your attention, there, there, there's an action to rescind policy blank, blank, blank on this topic. And then you're going to, second motion would be to approve this policy.
The mandated policy.
The mandated policy, which has been updated. The, the missing mandated policies are a little easier. It's just one motion. We adopt this policy, it's mandated.
Right.
And I think strategically, you want to, you don't want to, you don't want to sit there with a policy committee, here are twenty-three missing mandated policies, and we're gonna simply bring all twenty-three to the board to, to do that. That's, that's what I think, think strategically. There are, I'm sure, like Title IX, I keep on thinking Title IX, but I know, I could tell you that when I was a superintendent and I was told by, by CAVE that my Title IX policy was out of date. At that point, I said to my board, this is a Title IX policy, we're, we're out, we're out of compliance. We need to get it adopted. My board, within a week, got it adopted. They, they waived the two reads, they, they, so they had a motion to waive that bylaw, and they approved it because of the new. Is, are all twenty-three that level, level read? No. But that's where, again, with your superintendent, he and I have had many conversations going back and forth around these topics, well, many more. I, I'm confident that he can stage these required policies over the next several months to get them approved. And, and say to you, this really, you have the luxury of two reads, you really don't have the luxury of two reads. So this is an area where you need to trust your superintendent and his team and work with them on that. Certainly ask questions. You don't want to simply say, he says, no, just adopt it. You can ask him why, and you can, you know, listen to his explanation as to why it's important and make that determination, because ultimately it's your action. Right? So we have that moving.
Should that, like, kind of bypass at a committee level, like, when it's mandated like that, and just go straightforward?
I'm a big fan of committees. I really am. I think that, you know.
I kind of want to make sure we're.
Yeah, so I, I, I still think the committee should be, you know, bring it to the committee. Because I, I think the superintendent and his team needs to strategize with the committee to make those determinations. So there's a common understanding, because you're gonna be listening to your committee chair talk about it and talk about the staging, and you want to hear that he had a conversation with the superintendent, and he's well-versed in what, what he's recommending to the full board. You want the full board to trust that work, so it can then waive the policy and then adopt.
And then waive the reading.
Just jumping a little bit, we've talked all night about how we don't necessarily always adhere to the same protocols or, or processes as we go through. You don't want to start deliberately creating places where you don't follow the process, because then it'll start getting, well, should we have, shouldn't we have, better to just, now, the policy committee can just say, based on the recommendation, thank you, we'll move it forward without getting into the weeds, but let them do that. Because otherwise, you're just setting yourself up for future disagreements. Possibly.
And moving to, to another point, I just want to share with you what I, what I did over my summer vacation. Danielle and I had a long, a long, a three-hour conversation. I think it was three, I said, I told some people that, so most time I've spent on the phone since I was in high school. So it's like three and a half hours. But, but it was really, really well-spent, and thank you so much for your, for your work with that. Because having, having a disagreement as to what the bylaws were, I wanted to make sure that we had, we weren't gonna struggle over what your bylaws are, that, that your bylaws are, what are in front of you. I want to thank Joe for, for making it, you know, recognizing that one of the bylaws was not correct, and that he was able to point to the adoption date and all that information. So I am ninety-nine point nine percent, which is more than any, I'm confident about anything, that, that the bylaws you have are your current bylaws. So when we talk about bylaws, we're talking about the same set of bylaws. They're posted online.
Yes.
So they're posted online, we can, we can say hallelujah to that. But I, I think that's a really good start. And again, that's the kind of work that I think is really important. It's not about lecturing UN policy, it's getting your policy and your bylaws moved. Because bylaws to me are really critical.
No, he said it's.
Well, that's the one that's getting corrected. The one that, that.
Yeah.
Yeah, I gotta put the corrected one online, the, the, because that's the one we talked about. I showed you that red line one is.
Yeah, I got the red line one, that's the one that's online now.
Well, no, not that correct, that correction didn't, I wanted, because it was after me and you. So that will, we'll have that done tomorrow.
So, so again, I think we're in really. Um, so, so again, I, I think we're in really good shape there. Um, just going to do this. And, um, so, so looking at your bylaws, both.
Can I ask a question about this?
Yes, please.
Um, I understand what you're saying. What I, we came up at, I remember when, when you talked at the last meeting, you said, we were, we had all this, these things we had to fix. But we were better than a lot of places.
You haven't seen nothing of places.
No, no, I get it, I get it. You, you just put it, put it in that context.
Yeah.
We're messed up, but we're not as messed up as a lot of places.
Right.
So, when Willie was trying to present this at the last board meeting, I said, Willie, I don't understand why we got to do this when we're better than a lot of places. And Willie goes, well, I, I, you know, so, now, I, he got put on the spot, like, and I'm, now I'm going to raise that question with you, because you're the expert, Willie was sort of on the spot. We do, I have learned, so you, you need to answer the question that I learned since I've been on the board, of there being a past practice here, at least, of not implementing new code of conduct at the, in the middle of the year, which was the question that was just asked here. So that's not a given, changing the rules midstream.
There's really no given regarding that. And I think, I think it's, again, when the board is in a position to have a luxury of time, state, you know, like, for example, a cell phone policy is a great example of that. Um, my recommendation for boards adopting new cell phone restriction policies was don't, don't lay it on kids in November, you know, to, you know, and, and that, that's one of those things, you look at a natural break, look at when kids get back from winter recess, look at the beginning of the school year. But you also want to take the three months before that to stage it, to talk to kids about it, to have, have town meetings about it, and.
Well, I understand that. So here we are in, in March, April, April, and we're going to say, okay, now we have a new cell phone policy. That's not, not an easy time to implement something when they've spent eight months.
You're a teacher.
Living runway, to say, okay, new rule. That's just not, not good, not easy to implement from the teacher's point of view, or the administrator's, building administrator's point of view. So I understand the logic of not implementing new disciplinary policies unless there's some really important reason to do it. So that's why I, I understood the logic behind what I was told was the past practice here. So.
I think the key word though, Rob, the, the key word is mandated policy. So cell phone policy is, is.
No, I get that, I get that. So, this mandated policy is, is that important, that it has to be changed? Okay. So, now, the, the, the one that I had trouble with from a teacher point of view was the timeout policy. That struck me as ludicrous. So, kid, that's mandated by law?
So, so again, the, the, the seclusion policy is mandated by law. But there, that's one of those policies, okay, my, my recommendation, you get it, adopt it, so you have a seclusion policy, but then you can step back away from, you know, when you have a luxury of time, and the policy committee, you can charge the policy committee, look at that, you know, talk to, talk to Cave about these, this aspect of that policy, there are some concerns we have about it, is, is there any wiggle room we can do here? Because you can always get, go back into it, and then have a conversation about it, and then revise that policy, if there's room for revision. But you want, but, but you want to.
Let me just, let me just, because I understand the idea of not secluding a kid, lock him in a closet, lock him in a room, that's tough, that's nuts, I get it. But my sending a kid across halls to my colleague's classroom for a half hour, or an hour to calm down, and do a bit, do work that I give him to take over there, that's like common practice.
Right, again, okay, my, my, and this is just my advice.
Right.
My advice would be, take, get the, take the policy, get it adopted, so you can say to the state of Connecticut, we have a seclusion policy, it's been adopted. Because that's a big deal, if you don't have a seclusion policy. And then, then, when you get it adopted, and it's, and it's in your books, you can then talk to your teachers, um, they, they, you could have a, a policy committee meeting to review the seclusion policy that the board adopted, and to talk about, are these best practices? Are there other Bridgeport practices we can add to it to ensure that we're in the spirit and the, and the letter of the policy? Or we can adopt it other language that's more suitable to, like, for example, being more specific about the difference between a timeout and seclusion. Um, so that, and that might be a, a difference that you can, within the, the legislature and, and the law, you can maybe make those differentiations, where the Cave policy is more just simply the actual law.
Another way to look at it, if, if, and that's an area that is very open to having lawsuits.
Yeah.
You know, it was missed, they did it wrong, whatever. The first thing they're going to do is say, what did your policy say? Because any employee is supposed to go to the policy manual for guidance. There wasn't a policy.
Yeah.
So, having the policy is the first step toward protecting the district from unneeded lawsuits or bad judgments. It's enough to say, we have to have a policy on the books that meets the law. And then, as Jody said, with time, you can start to make it Bridgeports. But the absence of the law in the policy, or the absence of the policy could put you in serious legal jeopardy. And so that's why he's pushing the idea that it's urgent that we do it. And then, when you have the luxury of time, you can improve it, make it better, make it fit your needs better. But no policy, in this case, is very much worse than having a policy of any kind.
Thank you.
I was going to say that, so, I'm going to speak.
Yeah, just a real quick point. Um, if we do, in fact, implement a policy against better judgments, it's myself anyway, there is a policy that says we must integrate the date into the policy. If it's a student policy, that must take effect immediately, because the default's policy embedded in our policies is for student-centered policies to take effect in the next school. So we would have to.
Modify the motion.
Correct.
It would be an effect as of, yeah.
And, um, yeah, last point, um, as we do these policies, it's important that we post them, I don't know. We, we, I wrote, I wrote that up last time, that we posted two, yeah, we're approved, yeah. We approve, we approve two for immediate implementation.
I will talk to IT and see about those.
I think, I think we, we have, we have.
Because that was the mistake.
We have procedural things that we have to kind of fix, because the next day after the policy is approved, it should be totally good. So Danielle, you and I just need to kind of make sure that we get that, that cycle of how it's going to be done.
That'll keep us from going up. You know, I'm down some.
Thank you. Now, I was looking at your policy, again, I looked at all, all of your bylaws, and again, uh, there, there are most of your bylaws, and by the way, to your other point, the very fact that the Bridgeport Public Schools wanted to get involved in a policy project with Cave, because they were concerned about missing mandated policies and needed. That, in my view, signifies to me, again, I'll be very careful how I word this, that, that you are, in a lot of ways, ahead of the district, that don't know what they don't know. My first conversation with your superintendent back in August was, we have two services we could have provided. One was an audit, which would be, which would take about three months for Cave to do, to look at all your policies and basically give you an audit, and tell you where you're deficient, and where, and where, um, you're strong, and, and give you a report back. Typically, from there, the board would then engage with Cave in a, a, um, a custom project to take what the audit shows, and give you the model policies and supports to get you where you need to be, um, in over a three-year period. What your superintendent said to me is, we don't, I don't need an audit. I know, I know, we need, we have missing mandated policies, I know we have, uh, updated policies, uh, policies that need updating. It hasn't been attended to in many years. We need to go right, skip the audit, which will take up three months of time and resources, and let's get right to the main issue. And so, that's, there are a lot of boards in, in, not just state, but a lot of boards that are like policy-driven boards. They like to put out fires, but they don't like to deal with the, the policies. And, um, what I'm saying is, clearly you're not in that category. You, you get it, you know what, you, you know what you don't know, and you want to know it. So in that way, you're, you're in great shape. Um, the fact that you have some critical urgent things to get done, there is, that's a strategic issue. It is an afford unwillingness issue, and afford having its head in the sand issue. That's, how do we figure this out? We're, we're here in a, um, here at a time where we have some urgent matters to address, and now it's a strategic issue I have. So, to me, in my, in my polygamy, that's the boy I want to deal with, or to get some. Is that clear? Thank you. Um, what, what I share with you is, when, when I, one of the, so, again, I'm not going to go through all your bylaws, because many of them are fine and don't really need, it was, they're similar to what you did in February of 2019, uh, to what you did in March of 2023. They're, they're pretty standard policies. We don't need to sit here for two hours and talk about oath of office, I think, I think we're good there. But there are some policies or things I have observed that, I think whether they're norms or bylaws, I think they're at least, yeah, I'm not here to tell you what to do, but I'm here to get you to think, think about them as a board, as thoughtful, or that wants to move forward. One observation I'll make immediately, um, which is, um, which has to do with the role of the board. I, I noticed that there are times in meetings where the public has a chance to provide input. And what I see here in, in Bridgeport is different than what I've experienced, and I've seen in other boards, where board members will stand and speak as the public to the board. And again, I'm only raising this as, I'm not telling you you can't do that, there's no law that you can't do that. But I would only raise that as, as an issue of either it's normative practice or a bylaw. And, because as a board member, you're part of this body, and to speak as the public, even though you are part of the public, but when you hear, you're a board member. And just think, and think of your public, think of what you're trying to convey and communicate to your public, and think if that's practice that you want to continue. If it is, there's, we're not here to tell you not to. From my standpoint, it's, it's, it's a little Bridgeport.
It's a Bridgeport thing.
It's a Bridgeport thing. And, and again, think, if you're trying to, if you're trying to communicate to your public certain thing about the board, and how you're working together as a board, then you're not also the public speaking to the board. You're on the board, and you have the privilege of being on the board and speaking as a board member to the board. And again, that may have come out of lack of trust, lack of opportunities to speak. It, it could have a variety of places. It's just something that, my observation is, when I, when I saw that happen, I thought, that's unusual, that's different. Just wanted to bring that to the table.
No, I'd just like to offer a, a bit of a counterpoint to that. Um, while I was waiting approximately ten, eleven hours to testify before the state, there were several state senators and state representatives testifying before the committees, and they have the same opportunity as we do. So it's not really that.
They might not be on that committee.
But they, they got the chance. No, but they still got the chance to ask questions.
But I think the parallel to that would be, again, I, I, again, I'm not the argument, but, but if you're, if you're, ignore them.
It's fine, I just thought, it's just a point like them.
I know it's true, that Bridgeport, even the city council members speak to the city council member. And listen, as a leader in the community, um, I speak for my community. I have a church-based community, I have a community that I've been, been, so it's just like, you know, where is, where do I draw a line? I'm a board member, but I'm also a father, I'm also a community leader, I'm also an activist. So where do you draw a line? Because I, I respect your opinion, and I, I hear you, and it was, that's an interesting point. I've never had anybody else say that point, so I'm like, hmm, that's an interesting point. But it is, Bridgeport does it all the time.
Well, the fish never knows it's in the water, right?
No.
Uh, so I think.
You're a board member.
I, I, I would say that you bring that to the board. So you were elected by your community to be on the board, to be part of this board that really has no power, um, except as a board. And you, and you bring your vote, you bring your experience, you bring your, your lived experiences, and you get the opportunity at every board meeting to share those experiences as, you know, you could say, as, as a father, as, as a, as a church member, part of my faith-based community. I'm hearing a lot from my community about this topic, and, and, you know, sitting from your seat as a board member, which is a privilege, um, um, privilege.
So you're saying we should do it from our.
That, that, that's just, again, I'm.
Within any motion on the floor, or opportunity for the board to discuss something, you can always share your point of view at that time. Um, I think the point, and we, this isn't the first time it's happened, and I'm not talking about necessarily just in Bridgeport, but it's always something that raises flags, because if, if you're in, at the podium, you're not really speaking to the board. And I'm hearing is people speaking to the public in front of the board. And I'm, I'm not trying to be unfair about that, but when you're at the board table, you're a board member. When you're in the room as a, at a board meeting, you're a board member. And that's the purpose, for people to influence the board by sharing their thoughts during public comment, which is a little bit different. Um, again, uh, uh, Jody, clearly, we're not telling you how to do it or how not, but that is unique enough, especially as a practice. There are some places where I've seen it happen maybe once, maybe once or twice. It's not every meeting, and it's not a common understanding. And so I think, as you discussed bylaws, that might be just a place you want to pay, uh, pay at least recognition to it, and do it deliberately if that's what you want, and not to just do it, because that's how it happens.
The bare minimum, like, you're not speaking first, like, at the very end. But if, if we can't agree to, like, take it out, like, make it happen, then at least let the public speak first.
So, uh, another, what some boards do, and, and of course, I know we may be potentially opening up a whole different can of worms, but our board had board comment. After public comment, we had board comment, and board members would have three minutes, if necessary, to share. I was at a student event at the high school, or I did this, or I did that, or, I, you know. Again, I, I'm afraid that the three minutes would become six minutes. But that's, if, the concern is, we don't have an opportunity to just talk to the board. It might be at the end of the meeting, some boards have future agenda topics, and that's how they address that. And you can bring it up as, at some point, I'd like to see an agenda item that is X, Y, or Z, or deals with the report on how the special ed thing's going, or outplacement. And then, so there's a place where you can focus the board members' opportunity to speak to each other, but not taking it up at the most inappropriate time, or, and inappropriate time, sorry.
That's perfect, thank you. Um, when I was looking at your meeting conduct policy, is it ninety-one sixty? I noticed that there was a, a section that I think really effectively addresses the issues of, of public address. What, what's the, what your expectations of the public are when they address the board, and, and around civility. And then I, and, and I thought, what better way to support this part of the bylaw than for the board to have its own civility code? And so I, I looked at Cave, Cave has a, a model policy on civility, board civility. And, um, talks about, there's a little bit of a narrative that goes along with it, um, the policy implications, but it's, it's a conflict of interest bylaw. We have it coded as ninety-two seventy-three, and we adopted this back in twenty-twenty February. And, um, it, it, in my view, this, again, this is one of those bylaws that the board can, it's a model bylaw. This is something you can chew on, you can think about. There, there's language in here that you may ascribe to, there's language in here that you don't need to, not a mandated by law. What I think this does is signifies, and first of all, it signifies to your community that your own civility matters. And going back to some earlier points around, around beyond this board, this is a bylaw that all boards will follow, and I think it promotes good practice. But I think more importantly, it also models what you expect from your public. And, you know, some boards will take this civility code as, as its bylaw and post it in meetings, maybe review it in meetings, uh, hold, hold itself accountable in, in regards to this particular bylaw. Um, to reflect back on this bylaw, to have it maybe on, on, on the desks and tables as you have your meetings. But again, I, I think, maybe, I think in my view, good practice to consider your own civility code. And I think there's some really good language in here that's worth reflecting upon as a board.
Ninety-six seventy-three, that's a reason.
Fifty. You got it right here.
Uh-huh. I highlighted it, I was saying that.
I'm not going to read though.
No, that's it, I got it, I deleted it and.
If you look at the first page of what I, I ran down. If you look at the first page of what I found as well, where we found the civility code. This is our table of contents um for all of the bylaws that we have in our packet. So if there's any bylaw here that that you want to address or or think or get a model for, we we I would be happy to send that to your superintendent. You can share that with you. So if, for example, you want to look at a well, for example, I'll give you a good example. Statement of integrity, committee committees.
Oh, yes.
I'm I'm confused by your committee by law.
Listen to this part.
Sorry.
Committee time. Sorry. We were just talking. That's what we just talked about.
So so look, in my world, and again, I I I know my I've worked with three different boards of ad and 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 um actually four different boards of ad in the central office. When I think of committees, I think that there are two different committees. One is a standing committee. And that's why I think in hand that we had, we have a policy committee. We have a curriculum committee. We have an operations committee with facilities and things of that nature. You have a finance committee, which looks at, you know, monthly the finances of of the of the district. We have a goals and evaluation committee, a standing committee. A personnel committee, which I thought was probably the weaker.
Did each of those standing committees, when you say standing committees, they met every month?
Every month, yeah. Yeah, these were. And there was a chair and there were there were three members on each committee. Um, so so there were a lot of committees and but they were standing committees every, you know, when when a new board chair was elected, the board chair would identify who's going to be on the committee and who's going to chair the committee. That was the board chair's role to do that. But so project standing committees that met monthly that did the work of the board that that, you know, the policy committee. You know, we're looking at dress code. We're going to bring in the we want the high school principals come in, the middle school principal come in. We want it in our community. They're the ones who they're doing the research. They're figuring it all out. And so then then they they get to a point with their their policy that they're ready to bring it to the board for its first read and then answer questions. They take the leadership on developing that policy and bringing it to the board for the board's full consideration, for the board's adoption of that policy after two reads. That's how I think of like a policy committee. The finance committee would meet monthly. It would get it would know it would get reports on special education fund, you know, some finances, transportation, um forecasting, where are we with with personnel? Are we over budget? Are we under budget based on where we should be in March? And so it does all of that work, asks the superintendent, his finance person to be at that meeting and 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 provide those reports for you to study and and provide your feedback on to give back and say we we need to do a freeze on our budget because we're six million dollars over in personnel costs. And we we don't have much time to alleviate that. And we're getting into the end of the year. We don't have much time to figure that out. But but that committee would be looking at in September, where are we with personnel costs? In October, where are we with personnel costs? Continue to forecast it out to see what changes do we need to make early so they don't have as big an impact later? So that's what the finance committee does. Um, the superintendent in October or November um presents his budget to the entire board. And then and then that budget goes to the finance committee and the finance committee comes up with a series of workshops and looks at this these object codes for the first meeting, these object codes for the second meeting. And in looking at what the proposal is, where the differentiations are in terms of your budget, where you above, where you're twenty percent above last year, where you're ten percent below last year. In strategic meetings to get back to the superintendent to say, let's see if we can adjust the heating line. Um, see if we can do some strategic thinking around, we'll turn the thermostat down to seventy instead of seventy two. What kind of difference will that make? Or unfair labor practice or, you know, but that's where you have those kinds of conversations. Um, and then and then the finance committee, after you're doing one of those object codes, makes recommendations to the superintendent. Um, superintendent then provides um takes those recommendations, gives you his ideas back to bring to the full board for consideration to vote on the budget. And then it becomes a goes from the superintendent budget to the board budget. Superintendent goes from, I have a budget to to defend to I have a board to support in his own budget. And you get out there and and advocate for that budget. And that that's the role of the finance committee as I see it. But my point is those are standing committees. You count on them year after year. And the only other committee would be an ad hoc committee, which would be, we're we're looking at strategic planning. We're looking at building capacity. It's beyond the operations committee's capacity to do this work. So we're going to appoint three members of the board to lead head up this um ad hoc committee to look at this specific to be in charge to do this specific thing, to bring recommendations to the board for full consideration. So when I look at your your committees, it's it's and the the idea that it's a special committee kind of confused me. And the fact it's very broad and doesn't get into specifically, you know, what the committees are, what their charts to do. And and again, so to um rather than being the the dental monitor and and helping you think this through, I I have some some propose some model policies or bylaws that that are I I share with you in your consideration as you think about the committee work.
I I just want to also point out, though, that while the committee work might take some work off the board table and have it done in smaller groups where you can be in a, you know, one thing you have to acknowledge is that every time a subcommittee meets, the superintendent has a heart attack. Because there's a certain amount of level of of preparation for any meeting, whether it's a subcommittee board meeting. Um, years ago, I helped the Kansas School Boards Association start their first online agenda thing. So I learned a lot about preparing for board meetings. And it's a huge amount of work. Central office basically stops for a few days prior to a board meeting. Um, and then you're tying in your administrators who are maybe bringing in proposals and stuff to present to the board. All of that extra work falls on the superintendent. So having meetings just for the sake of meetings on the is sort of the opposite effect of creating less work for the board may also be creating more work for the superintendent. So there needs to be a balance.
If if we had like this, well, we do have their their special meetings or committees, but let's just say there was, we call them standing committees. Then then the the superintendent would know, like, every first Wednesday, it's this committee and they're preparing for it as well with the with the chair of that committee. So in a sense, like, you know, I know in the past, we it's not best practice at all, but we we put out agendas the day before and that ties up the superintendent's office. And the argument is they should have this information already. That's been an argument. Um, but it also does tie them up in trying to, you know, stopping the work to to get the information. So I think like if we, you know, we we call it standing committee or whatever, if we can myself as a committee chair too, like making sure that, you know, not two days before the committee, but maybe a couple of weeks before we're ready preparing for the next committee. That way it gives the staff time to prepare for it as well and the board to to read through materials. And if and most of our committees are on select dates. Sometimes we have to call a special meeting of a special committee. But uh, but for the most part, they are on specific dates.
Right.
Already. So, you know, I guess best practice would be to begin preparing for them sooner than three days before.
And again, I think this is something that will come up next at our next session as well. There's got to be better communication between the the board or the subcommittee chair and the superintendent to say, this is coming, just like we want the superintendent to sort of preempt and say, this is going to be coming down the road in a meeting, two meetings, three meetings. I just want you to be aware that we're on this and something will be coming. Um, that kind of cooperation needs to happen on the subcommittees too, because if you're just dropping something a day before or two days before, we want to have a conversation about this, or we want to debate this particular issue. I want to know what the superintendent thinks long term about what the effects of that would be. He might not, it it might not be just creating a document or or pulling a document out of a file. It may be, I need to talk to my principals and see what the interaction, you know, what this, what the potential effect is. That might not happen in twenty four hours. So.
But there also the way that superintendent can perhaps distribute to use distributed leadership. So you have you have someone as talented as Dr. Saki, who is capable of running the, you know, being their the key point to the policy committee. Um, your finance person would be the key person that would interface with finance committee. You may have another um central office person who may may who you whom you can tutor and help support to be a the go-to person in another committee as a way of building their capacity to do this kind of work.
Actually, he does that, like Dr. Saki. And so that's, I think that's.
Yeah, we will give it a I think the person, the person for each committee.
Yeah, that's the smart practice.
Yeah, um, yeah, real quick, it it's gotta, it's gotta go both ways because sometimes we have, we'll have a superintendent driven item on a committee and no documentation behind it until the day before. We're expected to redo a document the day before the committee, if the document is there at all. Sometimes we'll just have a verbal presentation, which to me it's a it's unacceptable to decide on an issue where I haven't had the document in front. For example, the committee meeting tomorrow was a program that's looking for approval that the contract is not in the in there yet. And we cannot responsibly approve things that we have not seen as a board. And that puts us something to gun when we get the data at the last minute, especially with like this happened in the past, like other superintendents in the past as well. That we'll get something two days before. This got to be approved or we lose this. And these aren't things that like buildings are fire. You got to prove the hose. But now these are contracts that expire six months, seven months. You got lead time. These are known solid dates. We should not ever be put under the gun as a board to make a rash decision without the information because rash decisions are very rarely good decisions.
The market. You don't get an argument from me. And then I would be lying if I if I told you I never had a board tell me that you're putting something in front of us that we don't have time to review, that we needed to, we needed two weeks or a week. And 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 those were the meetings where I left the board, made feeling pretty mortified that I was myself in that position. It happens, but but you also remember you're the person evaluating the superintendent. That's certainly one of those issues that would come up in an evaluation conference and say, look, you know, one area where we need to assist some brokers and and be sensitive to the board's need to to um have to act on something for us to have the opportunity to read it and to understand it, to ask questions about it. That's a fair conversation. I think where I would draw the line, though, would be around, like we talked the last time about. We have a contract, a Sandy Hook Promise contract, a seven hundred page contract. I don't I don't want you reading that and trust. Uh, come on.
It's not work to put it in a portal if the board member still chooses to read it, you know. When you say you don't want us to read.
Well, again, it's a.
That that to me says, well, don't you want us to see?
Now, it means that you you're aware of the fact that we are engaged in a in a in a relationship with with this organization. That these they got this, they're providing a a student safety, security tool that we're all and is going to get a presentation on what it is, why it's effective. You ask all your questions. But the bottom line is you need to engage in a in a contract with this organization. And you have to, at that point, say to your superintendent, make sure the contract, I expect the contract to be the promise wasn't going to cost us anything. It was that they were going to provide this service. Please have it vetted by the attorney and 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 report back to us that you went through that vetting process and has your stamp of approval so that we can say that we're in good shape with it.
I tend to be very suspect of things. I don't approving things I don't read because we never know. You never know what's within the fork, anything in our four corners. We're binding the board. We're binding future boards, but binding the taxpayer around these things. And if there's something in the right, I mean, we can, you can't ask every question. But if you could give it a peruse, most contracts are boiled.
But I always had a board member, when I when I was in that position, board member always asked the same question, whether it was around a field trip. And do we have the appropriate level of coverage? That was always that board member's question. And if it was more than this ratio, he wasn't going to fly. He wasn't going to vote for it. I had another board member who says, who would say um around a contract that I that I talked to the board about. Do are we expending any resources? Are we expending any money on this? And if I gave him the wrong answer to that, it'd be held paid for humanity. So again, those are good questions, legitimate questions that you would want to ask your superintendent before approving a contract. You know, who vetted it? Who's responsible for it? What are we? What are we liable for? And again, that doesn't mean that I'm talking about that kind of contract. You have a contract to hire someone, to bring someone into the district. It's part of the leadership team or it's part of a grant that brings in a team of people. Absolutely. You want to hear about who the people are, what are they going to be doing? How many years will be they be doing it? How much money will we spend for these people? What are we doing without? Those are all reasonable questions. But the actual contract, you know, if you have nine people who are suspicious of contracts on your board and you don't want to read the contract, all you'll be doing is arguing over the language of the contract. And that can doesn't mean, you know, vet and and hold accountable. But my concern as as a in my position, talking about bylaws and and action is where do you want to spend your time doing this work? You want to talk about student achievement, moving just before um doing, you're taking this good work you're starting and moving it forward, or you want to be reading contracts? So again, that's we we can agree to disagree.
Yeah, but 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 it's my time to use as I see fit. If I want to peruse a seven hundred page contract, which is not likely.
It's not the perusing part. It's coming back to the board and saying, on page ten, I saw this. On page seventeen, I saw that. On page eighteen, I saw that. And that you're only, and there are eight hundred pages to go through. So at that point, now you're talking thirty minutes at a board meeting about a contract that you had your superintendent. And he should have been preparing and holding, being accountable to. And again, that we and there are some contracts where you want to have more. When you're spending money and it has to do with people coming in, you want to ask all those questions and make sure that you don't want to be five years down the road and not have not have heard about it. And now you're dealing with taking money out of your budget and paying for this person when you didn't have any role in having that person even come in, even though the person wasn't. So that's I think there's a role for the board, but I just think it's good to be mindful of what that role is. And that goes back to lanes.
Do you run that question?
Yeah.
Yeah, I the only point I was going to make was we have a, we have to clean up that language. Because uh, when I came on the board, we had seven committees. Then we had three committees and there was a dispute about whether the chair had the right to do that. Um, the chair unilaterally changed from seven to three on the argument that the previous chair had changed it from nine to seven. Um, and now this chair changed it from three to four. And the language seems to imply that the board should approve the number of committees. So we need to clean that up. Um, and prove what those committees are. And I think we should be clear as to what they are. So it's with that and and that. Yes, that needs to be worked out as to what those committees are and be a little clearer from what I hear as to what their responsibilities are. Um, so that needs to be cleaned up.
And you'll see from the model um bylaws that I'm sharing with you, there's at least some some language there that can upframe.
Yes, yes. I'm I'm just saying that we historically, in the recent past, have had a dispute, part of which occurred before I got on the board. Part of which occurred while I was on the board. Um, and so we just need to clean that up.
But I think the key piece there is it's think about your functions, what you're trying to accomplish as committees. And then you can determine.
And then and then, as I've understood it, at least in my brief time, um, we have had an administrator assigned to a committee. So there was an administrator assigned. Um, and so the chair that worked with that that administrator, not always with the superintendent in arranging for the agenda, in working out what needed to, who needed to be there at the meeting.
Right.
Et cetera.
And that's good practice.
So I'm not sure that it's strictly a policy decision. I mean, if you use the policy to clarify what it is your intentions are. But if the board at some point down the road, in your goal to be more effective, um, you might want to have a meeting to say, okay, how do we do business right now? Is there a better way? Um, I worked with Shelton a few years ago. They had nine subcommittees. You know why they had nine? Because they had nine board members and everybody got that many. That was the rule. And so they had one called Cafeteria and Athletics. That was the name of the committee. Why? Since the chairman liked to deal with those things. We spent an evening going through what all these committees did and we had a list. We got it down to three. And, but a lot of it wasn't lost, it was either this really would be better under budget or this would be better under policy. But what we ended up doing is about two-thirds of the work was, we really shouldn't need a committee to make these decisions, this should be a policy. And so you, you're making sure the work gets done, but not necessarily here. Well, you don't hear me advocating for more. Advocating for five, one, clear policy and how it should work.
Right.
You know, how that, how that decision should be made in, you know, and, and in, within that, I understand that you can have standing committees and ad hoc committees, you know.
But I, your point is it should be a deliberate process and come up with who's doing what.
It should be clear, because in the last two or three years, we've had disputes as to how that's working.
That's a great point. And standing committees really should have a lifespan of more than a year.
Yes.
You said a name of something that you just gave us, so I have two papers here, documents. The Frisbee Board of Education Bylaws, Series 9000, and then the other one that has, is headed by a cave public school. Which is the model, the one you just called the model, which was the model?
Came out of the by, came out of the bylaws in the board, the cave public schools.
This work. No? Okay, thank you, that's the model. Thank you very much.
Yeah, so I gave you this one, which I found out in the cave. This one has stability, the one that has the cave.
Yeah.
It has stability.
Yeah.
And then I also gave you a committee ninety-one thirty-one. Ninety-one thirty-one and a couple of others.
It's a word model, so I wanted to make sure I knew which one I have.
But they're both models as well.
Really? The only other.
These are both models.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We just modeled policies on different topics.
Yeah.
The only other thing I wanted to just think, again, we have, I think, five more, fifteen more minutes till nine thirty, but what is your process for posting meetings in terms of time? When, when, when you get your meeting, regular board meeting or a special meeting posted at City Hall through, through.
So, yeah, so.
Through Danielle.
So for our bylaw, we go by our bylaws and.
How much time do you?
So the meeting has to be noticed, Monday is the meeting, so the meeting has to be noticed on Thursday, Sunday, Tuesday. It has to be noticed then, and then it has to be, the agenda has to be up no later than Friday by City Hall till set four, so bye.
Right, right. So posting the meeting, you do it less than, or more than the twenty-four hour posting we thought it was.
They're also posted at the beginning of the year when we send it to.
Yes.
We have to notice, but then the notice for each particular meeting goes out the Thursday, the fourth.
Right, so when you post the agenda, again, my, my experience is we, we had meetings on Monday, for example. So if we had a meeting on Monday at six o'clock, we posted, we made sure that the meeting was, the agenda was posted Friday afternoon. Friday at the end of the day.
That's what you do.
So that's what to do. I, I just want to make sure that you're not putting yourself in a position of, of, of requiring more time to get things posted. So as long as you're just following F O I, A, I would just say, stick as closely to that as possible. Of course, again, thinking as a superintendent. And I need, I don't want to cut time away from what I had to do by bylaws to get things posted and official. So I would just follow your F O I.
Can we do something?
So what I'm going to continue to do is, is work with your superintendent. Get, get information from him regarding, not necessarily the policy work, but if there are bylaws that you want more models from. If you look at this table of contents, there are things in there that you'd like to, to, to see a model policy from Cave. Please let him know and he'll share that with me and I'll get those model policies to you as well. I mean, again, the, the Cave Public School bylaws, they're all listed here. So that's all in our bank. And I'd be happy to give you any one of those bylaws that will help support your work.
Are they on a website or, are they on a Cave website?
The bylaws, probably not. But if, if you tell me which one you want, I can, I can go in my, my index and easily just send it over. So you can also, any, any board member can reach out to me and say, hey, you know, I'm looking at this topic here. I think we need something in that area, if you have something on it. Any one of you might, members and superintendent and.
And Danielle.
And Danielle, just email with whatever you need.
If I could just jump on one comment too, because it was in the evaluation and it was actually one of the goals that you sort of, at least tentatively agreed to, that it gives the board working better together. And bylaws, my observation only, that over time, sometimes the bylaws were not there to help the board work better together, but they were used to, or, or the absence of using the bylaws was a, a cause of discontent sometimes. And so changing the bylaws, improving the bylaws, working on the bylaws doesn't make bad intent. And not accusing everyone of bad intent necessarily, I'm just saying that you could use any set of bylaws and work effectively or ineffectively. Where you see potential for abuse, codifying it in bylaws is probably a good idea. So work behind your bylaws to say, how do we make it so we can work these here together? And not let the rules get in the way of good discourse. Where you're talking now so much about, we're talking to each other more, we're listening to each other more. Don't let the bylaws get in the way of that. So be thoughtful as you go through them and Jody's a great guide for helping think through some of these processes. But not to let that be, just having new bylaws is going to make us work better together. It's going to take the intention of all of you to want to do that. And I think you all know that, I've heard that several times tonight. Any questions for the good of the order? Our next session will be on the board superintendent relationship. I think we're going to talk again about some of the things we've talked about tonight. Lanes, you know, communications, who does what, et cetera. I hope Dr. Avery will be, feel free to share his perceptions where he's comfortable. Because he's the one living through all, just like you are, we're all living through this. So I think it's going to be an important conversation. Dave Irwin, who will be joining us that night as, as been a superintendent in half a dozen districts, I think. Been a superintendent of the year, he teaches superintendent certification course at Sacred Heart University. He has been in several districts to fix things when a district fell apart, he goes in and helps straighten them out. Recently, Region Twenty, East Con, when East Con had a problem, he sent him in there. So he's really good at figuring out how to bring things together. I think he'll be a great asset to the conversation that night. And that's next Monday. But then we get a couple of weeks before the next one.
Yeah, with Jody and the, you mentioned there was twenty-eight state mandate ones that you sent over to Dr. Avery. And we already worked on five, but then there was another set of twenty-eight that you mentioned.
Twenty-three.
Twenty-three. Twenty-three, twenty-three, will mine get in those two here? Including and not excluding the other twenty-three that are state mandates that I need to get my hands on, because I haven't been able to get my hands on them. And I would like.
Yeah, we'll, we'll talk, we'll, we'll meet soon.
Of course, my day.
Would it be too much to send it out to all the board members?
I'm going to take that about one.
They're working, Dr. Sackey, we haven't approved any of those?
Yes. We approved the ones they approved last week. Last, last week, last one.
The two.
Three.
Absolutely.
Nice.
It's a three.
Yeah.
The last one, we didn't approve. Yeah.
The point is like, I'm just asking, you want all twenty-three to like.
You want to waste the titles?
No, the list was five.
Just a list of the titles.
Right, I'm answering.
Yeah.
You want.
Question to me, yes, a list of the titles.
Yeah, we give you a list.
Yeah, because if, if you're going to start looking at all of them now, then bypassing the policy committee in a way.
Why I'm the chair, that's why I've been asking, because I've been trying.
But having the list, I think, is important to give you a little depth and breadth.
And twenty-three is a lot, so what's like a, just a timeline for this? Cause we're not going to do twenty-three hour meeting.
Right.
So like, what's the suggested, like, so far by my standards?
I would say, yeah, I think what's reasonable of the, if you look at four policy meetings, you know, twenty meetings. And then again, working with the super and well strategize. Whether you want to recommend the board waive the bylaws to just adopt it or to do the reviews.
But there's respect to everybody, there's two sets. So there's twenty-three that are missing, there was twenty-eight state mandate. Those should be kind of like, like you said, I would be kind of like, you know, they're state mandate. There's something that the state is telling us to do, so those are kind of like, we can decide as a board to decide to, to skip, you know, to skip the second meeting, a third meeting, once you guys have them. I can set out five or whatever. Last time when I met with Dr. Avery back in the early January, was he said, I can give you four, and I challenged him, I said, give me five. And then I got an email and we went through our progressions, we tried to get those five on the table. And right now we're holding on to, that should be going to the next, through my next meeting and through the full board. But I would like to see them, but then we can strategize, but I've been asked, yes, I would like to have them.
Again, again, the way that you work is, again, the superintendent meets with the policy chair and comes up with a strategy, begins those policies about it. So it's a collab, it's a collaboration.
Especially since it took great pains to tell us these are mandated policies and we should just get them in place and not tamper with them too much. That we have the intention to hear more than five or six at one meeting. That don't signal issues at the committee meeting, recommend the full board adopt these because we found them acceptable. And if a state mandates this, doesn't need to take that much time because there will be no debate because they're mandated by law and they've been vetted by the policy committee. So it's not like each one's going to say for a secondary, because if we push it to the full board to have a.
But that's not the way it's been happening though. The, the, the whole of the mandate.
I'm, yeah. I'm sorry, but the last two was pushed for one meeting. Then years delayed, it's going to come back and it's going to be approved. As Medina's saying, he asked for all of them. He just stated, and he asked for all of them. If he had all of them, he could decide to have more than one committee. The way I understand it is what he asked for more than he got is you're creating a lot, he's creating a lot of work.
But what you have, we have to go and update all of those. We do, we do all the updating and providing drafts to the board committee to be able to, but, but we, we have a whole lot of other things that was in doing.
So you're changing what Cave presented to us?
No, you got to change.
No, I mean, to get this stuff for the committee, all the policies to commit. They created a package. That package needs to get to the committee and the committee needs to vote it to the full board to get it changed.
Just, just from my observation, looking at what Dr. Sackey did at the policy committee. He did a really, in my, my view, a really effective job of staging those policies. Like he knew what the policies were, he was able to communicate to the policy committee what they are so that you know what they are. And then you were able to communicate to the full board what they are to get them approved with a, without deducting two ratings. It's, but that, that, again, that's still, I think you're going to have to figure out what the magic sauce is around the urgency of getting those policies adopted and making sure the board has at least some level of understanding.